It's summertime. We expect you to be excited right now this time of the year. That's only because school's about to start again is why everyone's excited. Good evening. This time I call into session, the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for August 1st beginning at 7:08 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming out with us this evening. To start our meeting off, please, in the opening ceremony, please join Dr. Reich in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Please be seated. And now if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, please silence all cell phones, electronic devices, iPads, computers, watches, pagers, whatever you're still carrying, to avoid disruptions around you. The first item on our agenda is under program and presentation. Many a times as a board, we're really good at recognizing others, but sometimes we don't always take the time to recognize some of the work that some of our board members accomplish up there. And we haven't done it and we've skipped over it and we get caught working on other items, but I want to take a few minutes tonight to recognize our two past presidents of the Board of Trustees. As a current president, I can tell you this is not an easy position. A lot goes into this. And we have not recognized these two presidents in the last couple of years, and so we finally have taken it upon ourselves to take a few minutes and officially congratulate them and say thank you for all your hard work. So first, we'd like to recognize our former past past president, I think that's correct how he said it, our senior member of the board who served on this board, was elected in 2006? Seven? Six? Close enough. After all these years, Ms. Peña, who knows, who remembers? So, and who served as our president before Mr. Barron. So at this time, please join me in a round of applause and thanking, wait, hold on. Thanking our former past president, Ms. Gloria Peña. And next, on to our immediate past president, a man who has served this district for many years before coming on the board as a teacher here in Arlington, who started teaching while I was in high school, and then we were elected together. You've done it a long time, Mr. Barron. You've been a real dedicated servant. And our immediate past president, who did an outstanding job as our past president, please join me in welcoming, and welcoming, and honoring, and thanking Mr. Peter Barron. They both warned me when I became president. You both were right. It's, my wife definitely doesn't talk to me at night anymore. I'm on the phone most of the time. So, thank you both for your leadership in this board. It takes a lot out of this and thank all our colleagues. I think we're, we can't thank you enough for all your hard work on this. Next, we will move on to the superintendent for administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. I would like to recommend the board ratify the individuals discussed in closed session for the positions of principal of Barnett Junior High, principal of Hale Elementary, assistant principals for Arlington High, assistant principal for Martin High School, assistant principals for Sam Houston, and to appoint the individuals discussed in closed session for the principal of Swift Elementary, assistant principal at Martin High School, assistant principal at Sam Houston High School, assistant principal at Seguin, assistant principal at Nichols Junior High, and assistant principal at Cookin Education Center.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. At this time, do we have a motion to approve the administrative appointments discussed in an executive session?
Mr.?
Oh, you got a special one you're gonna say? Okay.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. I move to approve the appointment items A and B, the ratification at administrative appointments as recommended in executive session.
Do we have second? Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. We have a motion by Mr. Barron, a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, all voting in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos, you have some leaders on campus.
I have several leaders to introduce.
Please introduce them.
So, at this time, I'd like to introduce the new principal of Barnett Junior High School, Ms. Stephanie Hawthorne. Ms. Hawthorne attended Xavier University in Louisiana and obtained her Bachelor of Arts and Texas A&amp;M University Commerce for her Master of Education. Most recently, she's been the principal at Atherton Elementary School. She's been an assistant principal at Swift, an assistant principal in Dallas ISD, a kindergarten teacher in Dallas ISD, and has also worked in radio account, executives in radio accounts. So Stephanie, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you. To board president, Mr. Hogg, the school board members, and to Dr. Cavassos, I'd like to say thank you very much for the opportunity and the honor to serve as president, as principal at, president, principal, as principal of Barnett Junior High. I look forward to the challenge. I look forward to the opportunities, and I know that we will do wonderful, great things at Barnett. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the principal of Hale Elementary School, Ms. Claudia Morales. Claudia attended the University of North Texas in Denton and obtained her Bachelor of Business Administration, Texas Women's University for her Masters of Education, most recently an assistant principal at Copac schools in New York, and also a dean of students previously in that same school district. She's been a principal at a primary school in Dallas ISD, an assistant principal in dean of instruction at a middle school, and an elementary ESL bilingual teacher. Claudia, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you, President Hogg, members of the school board, and Dr. Cavassos. I am overjoyed to have been granted this opportunity to lead Lynn Hale Elementary as part of the Arlington ISD leadership team. Please know that I will execute my role as principal with integrity, responsibility, professionalism, and dedication. With the collaboration and support of teachers, staff members, parents, and the business community, I pledge to work tirelessly towards helping all students achieve by maintaining student learning as our fundamental focus. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the principal of Swift Elementary School, Ms. Chelsea Allison. Chelsea attended UT Austin and obtained her Bachelor of Fine Arts, Tarleton State University for Master of Education, and University of North Texas for the Master of Art, in art. She, most recently, was the dean of instruction and assistant principal in Fort Worth ISD, an instructional specialist before that, an eighth grade teacher before that, has also worked in Birdville ISD as a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade art teacher, and has served as a pre-K through fifth grade art teacher in Birdville. Chelsea, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, and anyone you'd like to introduce?
Well, first, I'm gonna introduce my family. My husband, my amazingly supportive and handsome husband, Jason Allison. That's gonna help me later. My three children, Jaden, Cole, and Kai. We'll get that out of the way so y'all can see their adorableness. President Hogg, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, I am very excited to be a part of Arlington ISD. I think that this is the perfect time, the perfect place, the perfect district for me. I'm very excited to be a new member of Swift Elementary. I think that with this family, I'm gonna grow, and we're gonna have a great, great time. I'm so excited.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal for Arlington High School, Ms. Ebony Lewis. Ebony attended the University of Texas in Arlington and received her Bachelor of Arts, and the University of Texas in Arlington for her Master of Education, most recently a physical ed teacher at Bailey Junior High School, and has also worked as a physical ed teacher in the past as well. Ebony, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, or anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes. Good evening, President Hogg, members of the school board, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you. Talent is universal, but opportunity is not. Knowing that AISD is encapsulated with many talented educators, I am even more grateful and thankful for this opportunity to serve and to support the students and educators of Arlington High School in this new capacity. I look forward to fulfilling my commitment. This evening, I would like to thank a few people that are here with me. First, my Arlington High School family. Thank you. I have members from Bailey Junior High. I would like to thank Mrs. Benavides, Jimmy Walker, Rhonda Anley, Rennie Lizardo, and Rhonda Peterman for modeling and demonstrating what effective leadership looks like. To my family, I would like to thank them for their love, their encouragement, and most importantly, for teaching me that the key to success is how you respond to failure and frustration. And last, but, oh, two more people, I'm sorry. And then I would like to thank my fiance, Sam Nix, for reminding me that it's not what lies behind you or in front of you, but what lies within you. And that is who I give most of my praise to, and that's my heavenly Father. So, thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you for this opportunity. How sweet it is to say I am a colt.
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce the assistant principal at Arlington High School, Mr. Guy Rosales. Guy obtained his Bachelor of Science from UTEP in University of Phoenix, and has also obtained his Master of Arts in Human Resources Development. Most recently, Guy was a bilingual education lead teacher in Grand Prairie ISD, has worked in El Paso and Dallas in the newspaper and circulation industry. And Guy, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, thank you. President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, I'd like to thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart for this opportunity. I look forward to serving the students, staff, and parents of Arlington High School. I know I'm headed to a great place with tremendous leadership, and I want to extend a special thanks to Ms. Young and the staff at Arlington. I think they're terrific the short time that I've got to know them. Lots of tradition there. Very, very excited about this appointment. Additionally, I want to acknowledge two of my mentors who have assisted me throughout the years. That's Olga Silva, Betsy Burkabyle, who have guided me, given me the tools, skill sets, that I bring to the table today. And last but not least, I'd like to acknowledge and thank my family for all their support. Couldn't be here tonight, but they're watching, so. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal of Martin High School, who could not be here tonight. His name, oh, sorry, yeah, not yet. Not yet. Yeah, that wasn't a, that wasn't a trick or anything. Dr. Michael Buckley, assistant principal at Martin High School. Dr. Buckley obtained, and he's on screen there, that's his picture, he could not be here tonight, attended the University of New Mexico in Albuquerque and obtained his Bachelor of Arts, New Mexico State University for his Master of Arts in Curriculum Instruction, and Pepperdine University for his doctorate in Educational Leadership. He is, most recently, the Crossroads Graduation Coach for AISD. He has served as assistant principal in Everman, has worked in New Mexico, has worked in Nevada, and has also worked in, as a history teacher. So, Dr. Buckley could not be here tonight, but he is the assistant principal at Martin High School. Next, the assistant principal of Martin High School, who was about to come up, Robin Griffith. Robin Griffith.
I'm here.
Robin attended Texas A&amp;M University in College Station, obtained her Bachelor of Science in Education, attended SMU and obtained her Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction, has worked as a campus instructional coach, most recently at Sam Houston High School, has worked at Lake Worth ISD as a curriculum specialist in secondary science, English, math, and social studies, has also worked in Mansfield ISD as an English composite teacher, language arts teacher in the middle school, has worked in Grand Prairie ISD in the middle school as well. Robin, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you. First off, President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. First, I would like to just recognize my family. Though they're not here, we had two separate out-of-town, out-of-state commitments for them. But also, I would like to recognize Mr. Benavides, who is here with me tonight along with, I'm not sure, oh, there he is, Scott Johnston, who is an administrator at Martin High School. I cannot tell you how excited I am to be part of the Martin family and to serve that family, also to support the excellence known as Martin High School. I would like to thank Ms. Roddy and the administrative staff for all of their support, and to those that are out of town. I think that's the camera. Hello, and good luck, and I hope that y'all are learning lots that you can bring back to us. And then, of course, again, to my family, without their support, I couldn't do the things that I do each and every day. So, to everyone, members of the board, President Hogg and Dr. Cavassos, I appreciate this opportunity and thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal at Sam Houston High School, Kimberly Anderson. Kimberly attended Texas A&amp;M University in College Station, obtained her Bachelor of Arts in English, University of North Texas in Denton, obtained her Master of Education in Educational Administration, most recently an assistant principal at Adamson High School in Dallas, and has served previously as an assistant principal in Fort Worth ISD, and has served as a 10th grade English teacher in Arlington, at Arlington High School in the past, and an English teacher in Fort Worth ISD. Kimberly, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, or someone you'd like to introduce?
Yes. First of all, I would like to begin by letting you know that I'm both delighted and honored to be standing here before you this evening. I would like to say that I am, to President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve as an instructional leader here in Arlington Independent School District. I would personally like to thank the Sam Houston High School principal, Mr. Fernando Benavides, and along with the administrative team of Sam Houston High School for believing in me and providing me with the opportunity to serve the students, parents, and community of Sam Houston High School. And last but not least, I would like to recognize two important people in my life here with me tonight. I have my husband, Mr. Alfred Anderson, along with my son, my 18-month-old son, Alex, Wave Alex. And I just want to thank both of them for supporting me and just being with me every step of the way. And members of the board, I just want you to know that I am very excited about becoming part of the Arlington Independent School District family again, and I look forward to having a fantastic year.
Next, the assistant principal of Sam Houston High School, Marika Anderson. Marika attended the University of Central Arkansas and obtained her Bachelor of Business Administration, attended Dallas Baptist University and obtained her Master of Education in Educational Leadership, most recently a seventh and eighth grade math teacher at Hutchinson Junior High, and has worked as a youth coordinator at the Potter's House of Dallas, and as an advisor in Youth Equipped to Prosper. Marika, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes. Thank you so much to President Hogg, the members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos for this opportunity this evening. I am very excited to extend my service to Arlington Independent School District, as well as to extend my service to Sam Houston High School, to parents, students, staff, and the community. I would like to thank my husband, who is somewhere around here, oh, he's way over here. Thank him so much for his support and his love throughout this process. I would also like to thank my Hutchinson family that came out to support me, my friends, my friends and family that are watching online, and most importantly, Mr. Benavides, thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you for believing in me, and the rest of the Sam Houston administrative team. I look forward to an outstanding year, and I know that we're gonna do great things. Go Texans.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal of Sam Houston High School, Mr. Burke Egner. Burke attended Don University and obtained his Bachelor of Science in Information Systems Management, and the University of Phoenix in Masters of Arts in Elementary Education. Most recently, Burke was the assistant principal at Piercey Elementary School, has taught fifth grade science, and has taught fifth and sixth grade science and technology at the middle school, has taught third grade self-contained, and has also been a police officer. Burke, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you. President Hogg, school board members, Dr. Cavassos, I'd like to thank you for entrusting me with this amazing opportunity. I'd also like to thank Principal Benavides and the leadership team at Sam Houston for believing in me, selecting me, and putting me through one of the most rigorous interview experiences I've ever had. I'd also like to thank past and present leadership at Piercey Elementary, the students and faculty for the six years of amazing learning experiences that have helped me grow both personally and professionally. Although I'm a Texan now, a small part of my heart will always be an Eagle. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to present the assistant principal of Seguin High School, Mr. Brian Burden. Brian attended Henderson State University and obtained his Bachelor of Arts in Sociology, attended University of North Texas to obtain his Master of Education in Educational Administration, most recently a history and coach, history teacher and coach at Sam Houston High School, and has been a history teacher and coach at Martin High School as well, and has also taught high school history and geography at Duncanville ISD. Brian, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes. Thank you, President Hogg, school board members, for this great opportunity. I would like to thank my, or introduce my beautiful wife, Hazel, my daughters, Taylor, Cameron, Bella, and Kiana. Yes, I do have four daughters. Yeah. We're together, we're together.
Yes, five.
Five. I would also like to introduce my mother, Dana Carter, and my father, Fred Carter, as well as my father, Brian Burge Senior, and my mother and sister are here as well. Like everyone here tonight, I have many mentors, but I have to name a few, beginning with OJ Kemp, Kelly Hastings, Fernando Benavides, Beverly McReynolds, and Anthony Chris. I also would like to thank Laura Jones and Bob Wager for giving me the opportunity to come back to AISD eight years ago. As many of you guys know, I'm a, I went to Sam Houston High School, so I'm an Arlington kid. So, Mrs. Jones, I know you're not here, but I know you're watching. Thank you for allowing me to come back to Arlington ISD. Lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Sam Nix and the Seguin Interview Committee for believing in me and allowing me the opportunity to serve the students and the community of Seguin High School. Mr. Nix is somewhere around here. Thank you, Mr. Nix. I look forward to serving the faculty, the community, and the students, most importantly, at Seguin High School. Thank you for this opportunity. I won't let you down. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal at Nichols Junior High, Mr. Ricardo Gomez. Ricardo attended the University of Texas at Arlington and obtained his Bachelor of Arts in History, attended UT Arlington and obtained his Master of Education in Educational Leadership, most recently a history and avid teacher and a coach at Bowie High School, has taught history and coached in Dallas ISD, and has been an ESL and history teacher in Dallas ISD as well. Ricardo, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Cavassos, I cannot tell you how excited I am to be here today. First of all, first of all, I'd like to first thank Mr. William Manley and Mr. Ray Borden for their guidance and advice during my internship at Bowie High School. I'd also like to thank Principal Harkro for giving me the amazing opportunity to join the Nichols team. I want to thank my best friend, my beautiful wife, for being my inspiration and constantly, constantly inspiring me to better myself, not only as a professional, but as a person. To my mom and dad, there they are in the back, for, for never letting me satisfy, be satisfied with status quo. As a product of AISD, I'm well aware of the challenges that we face and how high the expectations are, but I'm very, very confident that with the team we have assembled at Nichols Junior High, that we will not only meet those expectations, we will exceed them. So, with a nod to the past and a look to the future, I thank you. God bless, and go Mustangs.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal of Cookin Education Center, Ms. Cynthia Waller. Cynthia attended Texas Wesleyan University, obtained her Bachelor of Science in Early Childhood Education, and obtained her Master of Education from Texas Wesleyan University in Curriculum and Instruction. Cynthia has most recently been the instructional specialist in language arts. She's been an instructional facilitator at the elementary level, working in the Foundations of Literacy program. She's been an instructional consultation team member at Piercey Elementary School, and has been a kindergarten teacher at Sterrett Elementary School. Cynthia, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you, yes. President Hogg, school board members, Dr. Cavassos, I just want to tell you, you know, when you think about a dream job, when the job came open at Cookin Education Center, I said, this is it. This is so me. And so, I just want to thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to share with the faculty, the students, and their families at Cookin. I also want to thank Dr. Spence and the team at Cookin just for their support that they have already given me. I also have my family. I have my husband somewhere, and I have my two daughters, and most especially, my seven grandsons or some here, here with me, giving me support. They said, Nana, how long is this gonna last? You know? I said, a really long time. There's lots of us. But I want to quote just a little bit from the Cookin song, their school song. It says, you know, "Cookin is the place where it all begins." And we know that early childhood is so important to our children, and I'm just so excited about the opportunity to start with children as they begin their journey in education. Thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to make several introductions of directors that we have most recently hired, and I think it's important that we recognize the leadership in the district at different levels. So, at this time, I'd like, and they, by the way, they've been working here, some of them for a little bit since we hired them, so, but we haven't recognized them. First, I'd like to introduce the Director of Accounting, Ms. Natasha Whitstone. Natasha attended the University of Texas at Arlington, obtained her Bachelor of Science in Accounting. She's, has worked as our Director of Accounting, also has worked as the Director of State and Federal Programs in Cleburne ISD, and accounting supervisor in Cleburne ISD as well, and has worked as an auditor. Natasha, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, thank you. President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve as the Director of Accounting here at Arlington. The past five months has flown by, but has been really great. Cindy and Tony are wonderful people to work for, and I truly couldn't have asked for better accounting staff under me. So, thank you all very, very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Renee Pope. Renee attended George Washington University and obtained her Bachelor of Science in Biology, attended Texas Christian University and obtained her Master of Education in Educational Administration, most recently has worked as her Curriculum Coordinator for Science, has also worked as a district-wide instructional specialist for science in Fort Worth, and a science teacher in Fort Worth. Renee, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, or anyone you'd like to introduce? Renee, congratulations, anything you'd like to say, or anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I would, to President Hogg, and to the members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, I am excited about the opportunity to make a greater difference in the lives of our teachers and our students. I believe that in this position, I can really help our effort toward accomplishing the goals that we've set forth in Strategic Plan, and have a great love of curriculum, and I love instruction, and I'm looking forward to this, this journey. And I'd like to thank, most importantly, my husband for his patience and his unwavering support. I have a million ideas, and he just accommodates them all. You know, and I also like to acknowledge, I have an awesome science team that I work with in Arlington ISD. They are just phenomenal. They help me dream big, and they help me accomplish great things, and we have done tremendous things in science, and they're gonna keep rocking and rolling, and I'm looking forward to just collaborating with a whole new team and helping us get to the premier status as, as a district. So, thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, Mr. Javier Fernandez. Javier obtained his Electronics Engineering Technical Degree from DeVry University. Most recently, has been the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction in Rockwell ISD, has worked for Horizon Business as a Project Manager, has worked in Dallas ISD as a, as a Project Director, and has worked in the Network Services and Engineering Capacity as well. Javier, congratulations, anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you. President Hogg, members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much for this opportunity to come work with Arlington ISD. I look forward to the opportunity to serve the students, the staff, and the faculty at Arlington ISD. I look forward to providing all of the services and the facilities that they need to be able to provide the education opportunities for the students here at Arlington ISD. I'd like to take this opportunity to also introduce to you my family. I brought my family with me tonight, my wife Sylvia, she would stand, please. My son Michael. And my daughter Natalie. Again, I thank you so much for this opportunity. I am extremely honored and very humble to be able to serve the students, the faculty, and the staff at Arlington ISD. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the Director of Fine Arts, Mr. Jeremy Earnhardt. Jeremy attended University of North Texas and obtained his Bachelor of Music in General Music, also his Master of Music Education from the University of North Texas. Most recently, has served as the Director of Fine Arts and Enrichment in Irving ISD, has served as a Band Director at, in HEB ISD, and Assistant Band Director in White Settlement. Jeremy, congratulations, anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
President Hogg, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to serve the students, schools, and community as Director of Fine Arts for Arlington ISD. I'm humbled, grateful, and I really can't wait to get going. I understand that school's starting soon, right? So, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce my wife Gwendolyn, and our little preschooler Kirsten. Gwen is an elementary music teacher, and she was actually a band director at one time, for what she's recovering, was, she helped open Juan Seguin High School back in 2002 and served there for five years, so. We are excited to become part of the Arlington family, as we celebrate the superior heritage of Arlington Fine Arts, and looking forward to be part of an amazing future, as together we achieve today and excel tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to introduce our Director of Parent and Community Engagement, Mr. Aaron Pedales. Aaron, Aaron attended UT Austin and obtained his Bachelor of Arts in English.
Automatic reflect, sorry.
Also UT Arlington, obtained his Master of Education in Educational Administration. Most recently, Aaron has served as the Principal of Crouch Elementary, has served as an Assistant Principal at Crow Elementary and Williams Elementary, has been a bilingual teacher at Webb and Morton Elementary Schools, has also served as a 7th and 8th Grade Language Arts Teacher. Aaron, congratulations, anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes. President Hogg, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this tremendous opportunity to expand my role in Arlington ISD, and work closely and collaboratively with the parents, businesses, faith-based organizations, civic groups, colleges and universities, to support our students, because ultimately, that's who we're here for, is to support the students of Arlington ISD. I look forward to building those relationships and refining and nurturing the existing relationships, because we need you. We need our community. If you look at our core beliefs, one of our core beliefs is, an engaged community is essential, and that all students can succeed, and we need you to do that. I could not be here before you today without the tremendous support and mentors, and I'd like to recognize them at this time, Dr. Harold Smith and Dr. Malcolm Turner for giving me my start in Arlington ISD 17 years ago, Dr. Jesse McNeil and Dr. Ron Kalas for mentoring me as I studied at the University of Texas at Arlington, my past Principal Supervisor, Steve Howe, Barbara Tap, and Sally Amendola for setting high expectations for me and believing that I could achieve them. Sally's here today, thank you for coming back to AISD for this. For the past nine years, I've had the privilege in honor of being the Instructional Leader and Principal at Crouch Elementary. And I want to thank all of our teachers and staff for your dedication, your tenacity, your love for students. You have built a family, and you will continue to grow, to grow that family. I want to thank the parents of Crouch Elementary for supporting me, supporting our students, and becoming involved, and I want to thank our students for working hard every single day. I'm very proud of you. Continue to work hard, earn your education, utilize it, and give back to your community. I'd like to close by introducing my family, because that's what it's all about. I'd like to recognize my wife Kelly, who's a kindergarten teacher with AISD. I'd like to recognize my son, who's out of town on a summer trip, but he will be starting his senior year at Lamar High School, and that's an adventure in itself. I'd like to introduce my two daughters, I don't have four, I've got two, so I feel for you, but they're also the light of my life with my son. My daughter Emma, who is gonna be in 3rd grade at Butler, and my daughter Ellie, who has one more year of preschool at Trinity United Methodist Church, and then she will become a Butler Bronco as well. Thank you again for this tremendous opportunity, give, thank you for giving me an opportunity to say thank you to those people that have been very influential in my life, and I look forward to working as the Director of Parent and Community Engagement. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the Director of Personnel Services, Mr. Roger Jones. Roger attended Dallas Baptist University and obtained his Bachelor of Science in History at Dallas Baptist University to obtain his Master of Education in Educational Administration. Roger has most recently served as the Coordinator of Personnel, he's also served as a Principal at Young Junior High, Assistant Principal at Shackelford, and a teacher at Shackelford Junior High, and he's also taught in De Soto ISD. Roger, congratulations, anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. President Hogg, may it please the Board, thank you hardly seems enough to continue our service in this capacity. As you heard from my colleagues here tonight, we're all dedicated to the service, not only of our community, but also to our students, in the variety of capacities which we will meet them, be it Assistant Principal, Principal, or Directors in various activities and enterprises. Our job, our goal, our focus is to make sure that their educational experience is as fantastic as we can possibly make it. In Personnel, our job is to make sure that the people with whom they interact on a daily basis, from the teaching assistant in the classroom, to the teacher, to the Assistant Principal and Principal, to our auxiliary and substitute groups with whom they work, are the absolute highest caliber that they can be, to that, to paraphrase Updike, "We burn with the hard blue glow of high purpose in order to make that dream a reality." Thank you for allowing me to play my part in that. I look forward to continuing my service to the district in this capacity. Thank you.
Dr. Cavassos, you need some water after all that?
No, I think I'm good.
You know, that, that takes a lot of time, but I want to congratulate all the appointees. It's worth every minute. We have a, Dr. Cavassos, great job on a fine-looking leadership group.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Now, if the appointees will follow, Ms. Sinata is our custom, we do want to have a receiving line to welcome you. Now, there's gonna be a little change for everyone who's been here at normal meetings. Normally, you can go out any door. We would ask everyone to please exit out that door, because we're gonna have the receiving line down that hallway instead of in the front reception area, so it's gonna be on the side. So, everyone would please exit out that door. Please let the Board go ahead, so we can start. We will reconvene after, it's not gonna be a brief break, because there's a lot of people. Thank you. I'll now call this meeting back to order at 8:14 in the evening. Next, we come to our item, open forum for agenda items. We have no cards this evening, so we will move on to the next item, Action Item A, Consider Delegation of Official Delegates to Tasby 2013 Delegate Assembly. At this time, I would open for a motion.
I'd like to move that we have Mr. Barron as our delegate and alternate, Dr. Aaron Reich, for the delegation for the Tasby.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, and a second by Ms. Solins. At this time, any discussion? Ms. Penya?
Yes, I just also wanted to make it clear that as a Tasby Director, I'm also a delegate, so AISD gets two delegates and an alternate.
Outstanding, great point, Ms. Penya. At this time, please vote. All trustees present voting affirmative, Mr. Barron, you are the delegate, and Dr. Reich, you are alternate. Enjoy that Saturday. Next item, we have discussion, Action Item A, Composition of Capital Planning Steering Committee, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. At this time, we'd like to present some information regarding a Capital Planning Steering Committee, and as we presented last Board Meeting, information regarding our facility assessment, so Cindy Powell will present information regarding our Steering Committee. Ms. Powell.
Evening, President Hogg, Board Members, Dr. Cavassos, welcome back, our short break. You will recall that on June 20th, Tracy Richter, or I'm sorry, David Wertz with Dejean Richter, and Casey Morris with Jacobs Project Management were here, and they addressed the Board. Casey Morris gave a progress report on our facility assessment, and then David Sturts, who's with Dejean Richter, the partner firm with Jacobs on this engagement, addressed the Board and outlined a community engagement process that we had at the time an option to add to our facility assessment engagement. The Board then, on June 27th, did choose to add that component to our facility assessment contract, and we've done that. Tonight, we want to talk about, in a little more detail about how that process will work. At the heart of that community engagement process is a Capital Need Steering Committee, and so we want to talk tonight specifically about the possible makeup or composition of that committee. The Capital Need Steering Committee will be tasked with reviewing data from the facility assessment, along with demographic information, finance information, other background data, and ultimately crafting a Facility Master Plan that will be presented back to this Board. The facility assessment obviously addresses our facility needs. We have, in addition to that, though, other capital needs in the district. Those range from technology, transportation, fine arts, possibly other equipment categories. All of these are very instrumental, all of these areas are, in helping us achieve our strategic plan, our goals to be a premier school district, and so as we look forward to the future, we've got to know what sort of equipment we need, what sorts of facilities and infrastructure we need, in order to help us achieve the goals that are in our strategic In order to determine where we need to be, we've got to assess what we have now, and to do that for facilities, we have engaged Jacobs Project Management to conduct a comprehensive facility assessment of all of our locations. That work has been ongoing since January. They have completed the Educational Adequacy Inventory work, they are completing currently the facility condition assessments and the ADA accessibility reviews of our sites, and they expect to be wrapping that work up in the next few weeks. Another one of the primary areas in which we have capital needs and have a significant capital investment in our district is technology. You are going to hear a presentation later this evening from Chad Branham, our new Assistant Superintendent of Technology, on the state of technology in our district, and one of the things he's going to touch on is a strategic planning process specific to technology that will take place this fall, and help us shape the future of technology in this district, and how we use technology in our classrooms throughout our programs. So, we have that area. We also, though, have, as I mentioned a minute ago, other capital needs, areas of transportation, and fine arts certainly. So, these are all needs that we have to address and consider going forward, and determine how to prioritize those needs and fund those needs in the future. So, we have engaged, through the facility assessment process, we will be working with Dejean Richter Consultants to lead a community engagement process, to invite the community to be very instrument, very instrumental in the process of determining what our needs are. In all... to invite the community to be very instrument, very instrumental in the process of determining what our needs are in all of these areas. So Dejean Richter will lead a community engagement process. And again, the key part of that will be a capital need steering committee. And we'll go through in just a minute the actual duties of that committee. They will then, that committee will also engage the community in conversation. And we will take extensive community input on all of these areas and have the community tell us their priorities for our capital needs going forward. And all of that information will be melded into a facilities master plan and also recommendations for how we need to proceed with capital, capital needs for these other areas and how possibly to finance those. So with a capital need steering committee, the purpose of that committee would be to provide recommendations to this board for prioritize, and that's a key word there, prioritize future capital needs specifically in the areas of facilities, technology, transportation, fine arts, and possibly other identified areas that are pointed out as we go forward. The facilities piece, I want to be real clear that the process that you heard David Sturts describe on June 20th was very specific to facilities and to the facility assessment process. So in terms of facilities, the steering committee will review demographic information and data from that comprehensive facilities assessment. It'll also look at future trends that will impact education through a visioning presentation one evening. And that committee will engage the community in dialogue to take direction, take priorities from the community so that we can help shape and formalize our facility master plan. And then they will begin to formulate options. Dejean Richter refers to these as facility option packets that are instrumental in developing that final product of the facility master plan. The end result of that committee's work relating to facilities will be the facilities master plan that will guide us in how we improve our facilities, construct the facilities we need to have world-class facilities as we've stated in our strategic plan. We do, again, have other capital needs in other areas, including these we've already talked about, technology, transportation, fine arts, and possibly other areas. And we are going to use the same committee to also review needs in these areas and make recommendations back to the board for what the prioritized needs are for the community. The staff will work with subcommittees of the overall steering committee to look at these different areas. And we will review background information, we'll review current inventories and current needs within the district. We'll also identify and recommend priorities for future needs in the district for our programs. And then this committee will, ultimately, these subcommittees will come to a consensus for what they deem to be our prioritized needs in these respective areas. Then the subcommittees will report back to that whole committee, that whole steering committee. And the steering committee as a whole then will vote and ultimately make a recommendation back to this board for prioritized needs in these other areas as well. In terms of the committee makeup, we want to have very broad representation on that committee. We want to touch on all the stakeholders and stakeholder interest and have them represented on this committee. In general, the timeline's going to be September through January that the committee will meet. There will be six steering committee meetings during that time and also two community dialogues. And as they've described it with us, these community dialogues, we likely will have two sessions of each dialogue. So maybe a max of four meetings total. Dejean Richter recommends that we are a large enough district that we likely would want to have possibly one community dialogue north, one south, or one east, one west, or often multiple opportunities throughout the district for those conversations. So probably a maximum of four different meetings, but there will actually be two community dialogues with two sessions each to take community input. Again, the steering committee will identify within its own group, subcommittees, to specifically look at these other areas. And staff will lead that, those presentations in separate meetings. And we want to be very clear, again, that the process outlined by Dejean Richter really does relate to facilities. And so in addition to those six meetings for the steering committee to work on facilities and the community dialogues, there likely will be several other subcommittee meetings for each of these different areas for the committee members to meet with staff and hear reports and formulate recommendations back to the whole committee. Working with Dejean Richter, we've had opportunity to identify what we think a good makeup would be for the steering committee. Certainly, this is not cast in stone. These are recommendations at this point. But you can see that we've touched on a number of different categories of individuals and stakeholders across our community. Everyone from school board members, parents, actually teachers, principals, that use our facilities and use our equipment every day. Representatives from the business community, at-large community representatives. And we also think it's important to hear from the students. So there are two student positions on this committee. And then representatives from TCC and UTA. And we think that that is important because of the partnerships we have with them and in the future, some possible shared facilities even for some of the programs that we are looking to implement. So the proposed makeup you see here totaled to 38 individuals. We would propose that only the stu, that everyone except the students be an Arlington taxpayer, whether that's residential property or commercial property perhaps. But we think that it's important that everyone on this committee have a financial stake or interest in this process since it, the process ultimately could lead to a bond package that results in increased tax rate for the community. We have also drafted a, an application. You have a copy of the application in your packet this evening. If the board approves, we will be posting that application online tomorrow and allow people to start submitting applications. You'll see in the far right-hand column, the method of recommendation. All of this, ultimately, the board will appoint everyone to this committee. But as we've done in the past, you know, we will reach out to these different organizations and let them know that we are starting this process and ask if these different organizations want to recommend someone to represent them, such as TCC, UTA, City of Arlington. We will reach out to those folks and invite them to identify someone to, through the application process, to participate in this committee process. Ultimately, though, the board will review all of the applications and make the appointments to the committee. And I'm going to run through these very quickly. This summarizes the information that David Sturts shared with us on June 20th about how the facilities work will take place with the steering committee. It's a very interesting process. They will actually begin by looking at background information that includes everything from financial data, current debt levels. They'll look at student demographic informations and long-term projections, building capacities. And then they'll have all the data from the facility assessment. All this becomes part of that background report that the committee begins to work with. Once they see that initial background report, the committee starts to make recommendations or provide feedback back to Dejean, to Dejean Richter. And then they will take that information and help further develop the information as it continues to come forward. The steering committee itself will be instrumental when we have these two community dialogues. They will actually participate and help facilitate those meetings. At the community dialogues, anyone in the community and everyone will be invited to attend and preview the information that the committee is considering and provide their feedback. Those, at those particular meetings, the participants will break into small groups of roughly six to eight people. And then the individuals from the steering committee will sit with each of those groups and facilitate the conversation in those small group settings. We'll also use questionnaires, both online and paper questionnaires at those sessions to take the community's input on the work to this point. Then Dejean Richter will later compile the results of all those questionnaires and provide that information back to the steering committee, again, to further inform their work as they go forward. From that point then, that steering committee will begin to develop a facility options packages that are specific to our individual schools and programs. Administrative staff likewise will have some input in that process. And then that information will be given back to the steering committee. And again, that steering committee will assist in a second community dialogue to share this information with the entire community. And again, through a very structured process, we will take community feedback on those particular options package and begin to see the priorities that the community has for our facilities. As we work through these community dialogues, we will embed within those also some information about these other areas. So again, we are taking communities' priorities and inputs on these other areas of capital need as well. They will actually include questions in these questionnaires and survey forms about these other areas, transportation, technology, fine arts, et cetera, to assess the community's priorities for those needs as well. Ultimately then, the steering committee will draft recommendations for these options packets. And again, their final end product, putting these options packets together in prioritized orders, become our facility master plan that is ultimately presented back to the board in January with recommendations to the board of how to proceed. On these other capital areas, we will work, the staff will work with subcommittees. I anticipate that the subcommittees may meet two to three times over that same period, September through January, to specifically review needs from these different areas. And looking back at what we did with the 2009 Bond Advisory Committee, we used subcommittees. I know that the, the technology and the transportation subcommittees each met twice to review information that staff provided to them. Those subcommittees then came to a consensus and made a report back to the whole committee. And then the whole committee voted on those areas. In fine arts, they met three times and again drafted a report that went back to the whole Bond Advisory Committee. Bond Advisory Committee then voted on a recommendation to take forward to the board. So this will be very similar to what we did before in terms of having a subcommittee that meets two to three times with staff to review needs and recommendations for our capital needs going forward. They will ask questions, will research those questions, provide whatever data they need. And then they will make a recommendation back to the whole committee. In terms of the technology in particular, again, you're going to hear some more detail about that in just a little bit. But there will be a technology strategic plan process that runs parallel to this capital need steering process this fall. And that committee will formulate needs and assess needs for the future in how we use technology in our classrooms and then how in turn that translates into dollars that we need to fund the equipment, the hardware, to support that plan. That group then will report to a subcommittee, the subcommittee, technology subcommittee, the steering committee periodically throughout the fall. And then ultimately, again, the, the subcommittee will make a recommendation back to the whole committee for the technology piece of our capital needs. So it is, in many regards, it's very similar to the process we've used in the past to present anticipated needs to these committees and let the community develop a recommendation to go back to the board. The exciting part about this is the way that the facilities master plan will be developed through a very extensive community engagement process based on very sound data, very complete data that's organized into manageable formats that will allow us to very efficiently go through and review needs objectively, very thoroughly for all of our campuses and programs to ultimately craft them into our prioritized list of capital needs for the future. We've got two slides here that have a tentative schedule for this entire process, and it looks like a lot. And I think what I want to point out again is that there are six steering committee meetings and two community dialogues. The rest of what you see are the subcommittee meetings, and you'll notice the in parentheses as necessary. We plugged in dates so that we have dates mapped out. It may be that one subcommittee needs two meetings. It may mean that they only need three. And so, you know, not everything that you see on this chart necessarily represents a time commitment from some, someone on the committee. The process takes us all the way out until January where the committee ultimately finishes its work in developing a facility master plan and making, formulating recommendations for these other areas. And then ultimately, we anticipate the final report to the board will be made on February the 6th for this process. So with that, our next steps include posting an application online. We propose to post that application beginning tomorrow. And we'll begin communicating with these different stakeholder organizations and invite them to have someone represent their area by applying through the online application process. Then we would hold that application open until August 23rd, which time we'll make the information available to board committee and let the board committee review the applications and select individuals to recommend the whole board for participation on that committee. We would anticipate that September 5th, that we would come back to the board and let the board identify the people to participate in the committee and adopt a charge to that committee at that point. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Mr. Hibs?
Ms. Powell, thank you for a very thorough presentation. At the last meeting that we held when we approved Dejean, had a community advocate that sent me an email and was asking me, is bringing on Dejean really worth the money? And you mentioned in your presentation several times that much of what this committee will be doing would be similar to what the past bond committee, their work of, in some of the subcommittees and such. But we didn't have the component of the community engagement. And part of the strategic plan was, is that we wanted to have more community engagement in every step. And I think that the feeling that I receive and what I think that you have conveyed to us is this is going to be a very extensive plan or a set of recommendations of areas that we need either improvement when it comes to ADA standards or just where our facilities are and so much more than just what we looked at the last time. So this potentially could be a huge number that comes in front of the board of saying this is, in a perfect world, what we would all need. And what we're talking about here is we're talking about having a similar type of committee that we had before, a very diverse group from all different segments, not only of just community, but of faculty, staff, and even board members. And, you know, there's a potential that when we do these community engagement and when we do the committee engagement, that they'll come back and say, do you really need that? And to be able to get the broader audience of Arlington in general and being responsible as board members, as responsible government, I think it's worth the money. I truly believe that if we, this is one, that you have a very open, transparent review. And there's going to be that opportunity for beyond just that committee, but a wider audience, those people that would like to come in, sit at that meeting, and have that ability to learn more, but also ask questions. I think that's ultimately why I chose that it would be worth the spend to use Dejean. So I just wanted to make sure that I had that clarified. I think it was a very valid question that was asked of me, and I appreciate the individual that did that. And from your standpoint, I think you set this out in a very succinct, concise manner that we can move forward on. So I appreciate that.
I think one other comment I will make, this will be a much more or a much better informed process than we've had before with the day. informed process than we've had before with the data as it will be presented through a very structured process. So I think there is tremendous value in that.
Thank you, Mr. Hibs. Any other lights? Dr. Rush?
Thank you, President Hogg. Just for clarity purpose, the steering committee will be given, obviously a lot of data from the assessment. Included in that assessment will be already somewhat of a priority list, right? Or?
I think where we start is with the raw data. And DeJean Richter will meet with staff to review what that data looks like before we first go to the committee. They've been working with our staff since the spring to develop what are called, what we call educational specifications. That's the starting point for how, that is how we are defining world-class facilities. So they had that input from us already. They will begin to match up that raw data against those educational specifications. Really though, before that process gets very far along at all, we're taking the community input on those educational specifications to make sure that the entire community agrees that here is what we expect as a standard or as a specification and that yes, this is our definition of world-class. So I think that yes, we will provide some initial direction in helping to formulate the first information that is presented to that committee. And then as it goes along, the staff that has been involved in setting those specifications, likewise, will go back and review it and kind of help formulate the discussion. But this is very much a community-driven process.
Yeah.
In the end, what we will have will be something that that committee has developed through extensive community input as their priorities for our capital needs.
And they are, by and large, going to have a significant learning curve on what our goals and objectives are as far as our strategic plan.
And that will be part of that, that initial background information is to educate them on that piece of it as well.
Yeah, it's crucial. And I think it's a great process and very, it is similar to what we've done in the past, bond advisory committee-wise, but much more engaged, much more thorough, in my opinion. So I agree with Mr. Hibs. I think it's worth the money to have them go through this process with us. Two more questions. On the application process, are you making that determination who on the staff side is reviewing the application to make those recommendations to the board to appoint?
The, we will just provide the data to the board and then if the board as a whole or a committee of the board will review those applications and make those selections.
Dr. Rush, if you wouldn't mind, can I interject real quick? We kind of thought through, as we appointed new committees, and the community engagement committee with your chairing and I think Mr. Hibs and Mr. Pampa are serving on, one of the purposes of that committee is to make selections, review applicants and bring applicants back to the board. And then as a whole, as a board, we will vote on those committee members.
Okay. And the other question that I had on the application and the description, is this similar to what we did with the bond advisory committee as far as, there's space in here to put your level of experience? Are we seeking any specific objective experience spectrums or anything?
We have actually, this application is much more extensive than what we used with the previous bond advisory committee. I went back and looked at that application and it pretty much asked for name, contact information, address, ask if you were a district employee or if you were related to a district employee, and then why you wanted to serve on the committee. Since that point, for bond oversight committee and for financial futures committee and now with this, it's a very similar application where we do try to ask questions about occupation or work background or prior committee experience that an individual may have had or any sort of experience that they may have had that might particularly lend itself to the planning process. And I think through the questions we've asked and the data we've asked for, we should see specific levels of expertise that will help us in selecting individuals that may be particularly beneficial to specific parts of this process.
Okay. And I did have one more question that I forgot about. On the city of Arlington representative, with the city's making that recommendation, is that anticipated to come from the city manager's office or the city council or?
I think we will contact them and explain that, you know, we are embarking on this process and that we would invite someone from the city and then they can determine how they want to identify someone to recommend for an application even. And so they can make that choice as to whether it be someone from the council or city staff.
Well, yeah, I just didn't know if it was going to be, not inferring that either of them would be the ones for the committee, but just who's going to go through that process, if it's going to be the staff-driven or council-driven. But you'll let them both know and they'll figure it out.
And we can. And likewise, if the, you know, the board chooses to reach out to the council and have that discussion too, I mean, we certainly can do that.
Well, I'm, I think it's going to be a very involved process, to say the least, but I think it's great. It will give us a great laundry list of priority of what needs to be done. And I think there's probably going to be some obvious things that come out of this that are no brainers. I think getting into the thick of it, into the weeds a little bit, there might be some tough issues to try to prioritize. And I think the number is going to be huge. I would see this something that maybe we can do in one lump sum or maybe we'd have to split over a couple of different offerings to the public. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Mr. Pampa?
Thank you, President Hogg. I just have a quick question on the application, which is applicant classification, that's where they're going to tell you which of the particular?
Right. That will help the board identify individuals into these different categories. And we're not limiting them. I mean, they can select, you know, multiple ones. And so then the board can use that information to help actually create the committee within the composition you see here.
And then on the residency requirement, just to be clear, tell me a little bit more about that.
It's not so much a residency requirement as it is you need to be an Arlington taxpayer. So it may be that for the business community, it might be that there was a business person who has a business here and they pay taxes on that business property.
Property taxes, is that what you're referring to?
Right, exactly. And I think that that's specifically what we're looking for. And so as long as you are paying property taxes in this district, you have a financial interest in this process. And so the only ones that would not have, be any sort of a taxpayer would be the students. They obviously would be residents.
So even the college and university representatives and say your principals and all, even those would have to be, you have to represent TCC, but you also have to?
Be a resident. And that would be our preference. And certainly if the board would prefer to not have that as a requirement for the city or university representation, we can make that exception.
Yeah, I think maybe just in those, it may be something that we reconsider, but I don't want to limit who TCC and UTA can appoint to this particular committee. I'm assuming their leadership is going to appoint somebody to sit in this committee. And so, you know, I don't necessarily want to limit that, but again, it's up to the board. It may be a little bit of a discussion that we can have, you know, after this. I mean, we're not having to decide this today, right?
Right, absolutely.
Okay. So just something to think about for those organizations, for the city also, they may want to appoint somebody that doesn't happen to live here, that don't all live here. So, thanks.
Ms. Solins?
Thank you, President Hogg. Ms. Powell, just one quick follow-up question to my colleagues. You mentioned surveys from DeJean Richter and I'm glad to hear there's going to be surveys. Can you give me an idea of what the distribution of the surveys would be? Will they be available to people outside of the committee, to a broader span?
Yes, absolutely. The questionnaires, they refer to them, will be available at those community dialogues. They will also be posted online. And so, yes, you know, it will be available to individuals outside the steering committee. And the steering committee will have a role in developing those questionnaires.
That's fantastic. So we'll probably have the broadest access for community input than we've ever had.
Absolutely.
So fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solins. Yeah, sure, go ahead, Mr. Rush.
Talking to what Mr. Pampa was stating, seeing we don't have that clearly specified as on the application, is that something where we could approve this tonight and still move forward so that we can get this posted?
Yeah, we can. In the application itself, it asks for residents. It asks for your address and also for work, where you work and a work address. And so staff can do some research on the applications to verify residency. But yes, we can, I think there's a statement on that cover page that goes with the application down towards the bottom about being a taxpayer. We may need to alter that just a bit before we post the application tomorrow. But absolutely, we can go forward with the application because it's drafted.
Let me give an idea. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rush. Mr. Pampa, I think you bring up a good point. I would say let's give our community engagement committee some freedom to work on this. And I think we do have to have a little freedom for that committee to make some selections of the right ones. I do think we need to limit it. So I would say, I would propose we could potentially look at approving this tonight with it not exceeding, maybe we throw it at 20% non-taxpayers. That would be six people. Could not, could be not taxpayers, not to exceed 20%. You're looking at me funny, Mr. Hibs. Does that make sense? Okay. So I'm just saying, giving you a little freedom to make some of those selections and choices is one of the ideas. I think we could give our community engagement committee some freedom to do that while still having a majority of the committee being taxpayers. And Mr. Pampa, I think you were asking one point and I think we need maybe a little clarification on that. They either need to, because you said property tax, then we said live within AISD, because I then look and say, well, what about our folks that aren't paying property tax if they live in an apartment? We still want them to be on the committee because they're still in here. So I think it's, I think it needs to be some of each. And so I would, I would say we, I would propose we approve this and let the committee kind of work out those little interesting details with Ms. Powell and her staff.
Exactly what are we approving tonight?
The format of this committee with those tweaks and changes that we'll need to?
I thought they just wanted the application approved.
Well, that's the draft application. The agenda item is in regards to the composition, the structure of the committee.
It's truly about the structure of what we're doing, what they're looking at activities for, and also the tentative schedule of what we're looking to do and also of the committee structure itself. And so I think the committee structure is where we need to, you know, have a little tweak here and there. And so that's why I think it's always nice to set an action item with some max limits and then if the committee needs to, bring it back to us for final review. Ms. Powell, just one thought, one, two quick things. Is there going to be a chair or a spokesperson chosen for this group?
Yes. And I think certainly the board can go about this however they choose. The board could appoint a chairperson and/or the committee could elect its own leadership. And so this board has history of doing both over the years. We've had FFC vote on their own chairperson. We've had the board appoint a chairperson. So I think certainly the board has an option there.
Okay. And the next question I have is, we have, is specifically under teacher associations, they represent more than just teachers, correct?
We put employee associate, I think that was the intent. Okay, we will check on that, but that was, that was the, oh, on the, on this particular slide, yes, we should point out that that really should be employee associations.
And so my next question leading up to that is it says six teachers. What if the employee association wants to appoint a paraprofessional? So are they, we have three major associations. Are they each getting two slots?
Yeah, I think that's up to the board to decide. On the application, we ask for individuals, say, are you an employee, yes or no? And if you answer yes, are you a member of an employee or, and there we did use that term, to give the board information so that as you seat people for the committee, you can determine if you want a broad representation across multiple employee organizations or not. If that's something that's important to you.
And I would ask my colleagues is, it says six teachers. Do we need one of those slots or add an extra slot for a paraprofessional? I'm just thinking through the process that we have here.
If I can comment?
Please go ahead, Mr. Pampa.
I've also, you know, we've gotten feedback from teachers saying, look, we don't want to, we want the opportunity to have a voice without necessarily having to be the voice of the association.
Right.
So I don't know that you have to have two per association.
It's fine.
To give some teachers that just want to represent teachers themselves, I guess.
I think it's, I think it's fully fair to say one representative per association and then the other three are open slots.
There could be?
They could have another association without a doubt because we do have some teachers that aren't members of any association. So that is a fair point. Dr. Rush?
I was just, maybe instead of labeling teachers, we can just say non-administrative personnel or non-administrative employees because we've got the administration with principals, we have senior admins input on it. That way we cover everybody.
All right. If the board doesn't have any problems, I think that's a potential idea. Mr. Hibs?
People, this, we're talking about having this go online pretty quickly, is that?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that individuals that look at this tomorrow will not be confused whether or not they can apply or not. Because I think that what we could do is we could, we could get this, just, I'm just trying to put everything in my head right now, just what we were just discussing. And just trying to make sure that we, that we capture everything. I think that we just need to make sure that we have this very clear as this goes to be put on tomorrow, who can, can't apply. I don't have a problem because it's going to be the taxpayers that's going to approve this. It's going to be those voters that are going to be approving this. They should have first and foremost say, period. And I don't think it's too much to ask a TCC, a UTA, or the city of Arlington to say, we would like for you to have an Arlington resident being part of this. I do understand, Ms. Pampa, your point. I absolutely believe, you know, that these organizations should have the appropriate person to be appointed, but ultimately, it's going to be the voters of Arlington that's going to choose whether or not to accept whatever bond package may come their way. So limiting, myself personally, to limit it to those people that are Arlington taxpayers, I don't have a problem with. And I just don't want us to dilute this process so much that people just don't understand who can apply and can't tomorrow.
And, Mr. Hibs, I think that's a great point. I fully agree with you. The one document they did attach that shows that is what will be on the application, so I think it's pretty broad. And where I was kind of leading with that was saying, as our community engagement committee starts looking at that, if we want to put the rules right there or say, okay, if you have one that you think should be on there, okay, you can consider that. I would have no problem putting all taxpayers on there whatsoever. I would kind of leave that up to the subcommittee to say, hey, let's look at that, review the applications. Because I also don't want to miss the opportunity of that outstanding facilities director who lives in, you know, Kennedale, right next to us, but works in UTA every single day, has a vested still interest in this, that would be a great asset to the committee. There is a chance of, could we miss them? But if we miss them, there's someone else that's going to be just as good. So I have, I have no problem with your recommendation. Ms. Peña?
I just want to make some clarification. We are saying AISD?
Yeah.
For the district, which will include Grand Prairie.
The Arlington Independent School District, because someone could live in the city of our, or in the city of Grand Prairie, but within the Arlington Independent School District.
Right, so they're still paying taxes.
They're still paying Arlington ISD taxes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that clarification is provided because we keep saying Arlington, but it is also Grand Prairie. saying Arlington, but it is also Grand Prairie, that sliver that we've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. I think that's a great clarification. At this time, with no more lights, we've discussed a lot of items. So we do need a motion to move staff forward with this. So if someone has a motion that can kind of sum it all together, which could be a tough challenge. Ms. Solins is close to making one.
Yes, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested steering committee composition as presented with any modifications and changes being the board subcommittee, subject to board subcommittee approval.
Okay.
Because, in case you need to make the changes you're talking about.
I agree. First, do we have a second?
Can I just ask a question about that, about your motion?
We actually, I think, need a second before you can have a discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Pampa's second. Now, you can discuss and you can also amend a motion.
Do you mean that the subcommittee will make changes and approve it themselves or the subcommittee will make recommendations for changes to this board?
The subcommittee would not have authority to make changes for the, for the entire board. It's just we, we talked about some small modifications or advice and just, just those pieces, but not, not a change in the steering committee composition. I guess maybe the better wording would be to coordinate with the board subcommittee. We need a different motion?
I'm okay with, I just want to understand what, what your goal was.
And, Mr. Pampa, if there's anything you can add, you can add an amendment onto an emotion.
I just wanted to be clear.
For more clarification. Ms. Pena, you got, go ahead.
That that motion will include the employee association, not the teachers' association.
Yes, and the number as well from, instead of six, let me withdraw my motion, let's start again, because this is getting confusing at this point. Because we need, we need to also change the number of, on the teacher association, so.
You can withdraw your motion, and so at that time, we have a withdrawn motion. Would you like to? Okay, Dr. Reich.
Okay, let's have the motion be to approve the committee composition as presented with the modification of splitting out the six teachers to three, three teacher associations? Three employee, three teacher associations?
I'd say employee.
Employee, okay, three employee associations. We're still keeping six total, but make it, change it from teachers to non-administrative employee or non-administrative personnel. The only other thing that I heard is basically to keep it the way it is right now as far as the AISD property tax. That wasn't very clean, but that's what I heard.
We have a motion by Dr. Reich, which I will reiterate back to the board just for clarification, and a second by Ms. Solins. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Hibs?
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're clear here because I don't want us to go further and then say, but I think this is what we meant. Mr. Pampa brought up the point that he would like to see that these organizations like TCC and UTA would be able to have non-residents be able to serve if that's who they're appointed. Is there favor with that or under this recommendation, as I hear it, means that we're going to limit it to AISD taxpayers, correct? And that's, so I just want to make sure that we have clarity there.
Everyone, Mr. Hibs, that is what I heard in the motion. And so if anyone does need to amend that, that can be done. Okay? Any further discussion from the board? Oh, you ready to vote? Not, not, I thought you were pushing a button, Ms. Solins. Thought you were ready. With that, we have a motion by Dr. Reich to approve the committee composition as presented with three employee associations representing and three non-administrative personnel as presented by staff. Is that correct, Dr. Reich? Okay. And a second by Ms. Solins? Did you second? I, I don't, we don't need to, Mr. Hibs, just ask for a clarification. I think it's very clear. And Ms. Solins, you did second that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. We have a motion by Dr. Reich and a second by Ms. Solins. He's, he's ready to vote. Oh, he does have a question. Mr. Barron?
The three, six teacher types, three are going to come from the associations, whether they're employees or teachers or staff. The other three are going to be basically at-large applicants who may be teachers or may be employees. They're not going to come from the staff, which is what you just said. They're not going to be recommended by staff, they're just going to apply.
They, they will just apply and be chosen by the committee. Yes, sir, Mr. Barron, that is correct.
Okay.
Any other clarifications? It's good to get the clarification so we know exactly what we're voting on, on this one. Our attorney looks at us with disdain when we, when we vote non-clearly. So with that, seeing no further lights, any further discussion at this moment, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees voted in affirmative. We have a start of a steering committee. You're, you're right, Dr. Reich, it's summertime, we're back in the swing of things. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Next, we'll have item on the agenda, items to be withdrawn from consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Seeing none, tonight, we'll be considering items listed on your agenda under consent. Ms. Powell, please share donations and bids with us.
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavassos, we have eight bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening. In all cases, the administration recommends the lowest bids meeting specifications and the bids that represent the best value to the district. We also have donations to report, I believe. Separate list of those to place on the screen. They don't have that? Okay. All right, I will, let me turn to the rap page and I will read the donations. It is my privilege this evening to report that our schools have received donations from the following individuals and organizations. The Arlington High School Band Booster Club, the Arlington High School Speech Debate Booster Club, the Arlington High School Softball Booster Club, Lamar High School Girl Soccer Booster Club, Lamar High School Basketball Booster Club, Lamar High School Orchestra Booster Club, Lamar High School Choir Booster Club, Lamar High School Softball Booster Club, Toyota Dealer Match Program, S. Foster McCurdy, Martin High School Golf Booster Club, the Martin High School Girls Basketball Booster Club, Martin High School FFA Booster Club, AFCEA Educational Foundation, the Martin High School Swimming and Diving Booster Club, the Martin High School Orchestra Booster Club, Arlington Public Schools Counselors Association, Lamar High School Choir Booster Club, Rayleigh Superior Janitorial Service, Brookdale Senior Living, Plaguehorn Family, Nichols Junior High School Athletic Booster Club, Primrose School of Northeast Green Oaks, Life Touch National Studios, Civic Entertainment Group, JP Morgan Chase Foundation, Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, Fred and Chaney Yelverton, Primo Fundraising, Walmart, the Thornton Elementary School PTA, and JP Morgan Chase Foundation again. The total donations presented for your consideration this evening, $65,352. This is our first report for the year, so our year-to-date total is also that same amount, $65,352.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, and thanks to the community for their generosity. At this time, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Pena and a second by Dr. Reich. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees voted in affirmative. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Next, we'll move on to our discussion items. We will go to discussion item A, final report of 2012-13 action plans. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Hogg. And tonight, Dr. Lane Say is here to present the final report for the 2012-2013 action plans, and we're reaching our year-one anniversary and, of our strategic plan. And we've worked with Elaine, and she has compiled the report that she wants to share tonight. So Elaine, welcome.
Thank you. President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos, hi. It's good to be back here and to report on the final phase of implementation of the 12-13 plan. Last time I was in front of the board, we were reporting on the plans that had been developed for the 13-14 school year. And those plans, of course, are already underway since that timeframe started in July. So this report covers really the last three months of the prior year, so it covers April, May, and June activities. The review, of course, goes through June, and the action plans were updated in a column that details all the specifics of each activity that was accomplished. And as we talked about in the last presentation before the board about the 13-14 plans, some of the activities that were scheduled to be completed in this final quarter have been moved into the 13-14 plans, but we'll, we'll see those as we go through. And of course, they're being moved because they did not, were not able to get them to completion for various reasons. First goal of the Managed Performance MPE, the policy came before you, was adopted in May and June, and staff receive their training during the LLT training in June. You receive the report of the curriculum audit. It's, it's really interesting as we go through here because what we're reporting on are all the things that happened in this quarter, and most of the things that happened in this quarter came to you directly. So I'm going to be telling you things that you have already addressed and approved for the most part. The instructional model work will continue into 2013 and is still underway. And then the 10-year projections for the LEAP and LOWSES will not actually continue, but they're still awaiting the results. So that will be forthcoming from Templeton demographics. Goal two, early college high school there, you've approved the budget for the 13-14 school year in terms of the planning for the early college high school. And the district's been in discussion with community college regarding a facility. There's been a lot of teacher training that's, and staff training in terms of the higher education and career education. The teachers who will teach the new eighth grade course receive training, counselors receive training in June on dual credit opportunities. Staff developed a PSAT, SAT prep course that's being taught this summer, a 30-hour preparation course, and it is being taught throughout the district to high school students. And they also developed an 18-hour course that will be taught in the, in the actual 13-14 school year during, during, during that timeframe, likely after school or on Saturdays. The district's also been in discussion with UTA about several dual credit opportunities, the STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and potentially criminal justice and nursing programs. The Accuplacer boot camps were completed as scheduled, and the math in CTE, which is a program where math teachers work with CTE teachers in terms of the way and the skills to improve their teaching of math application skills and CTE courses. Goal four, world-class facilities, we probably don't really need to go through that. We've talked about that, or you've heard about that quite a bit, but this is just relating the information that Cindy shared with you earlier. In terms of safe and secure environment, the one action on the buzzer camera access system that was 95% complete at the end of June, the discipline specialist was hired and filled. Principals completed in the LLT work with their campus discipline data. And then the discipline management system, as we talked about before, has been moved, that development work has been moved into the 13-14 school year. Goal 10, dealing with highly effective teachers, the competitive compensation work has been divided into two pieces. And an RFQ was issued in June with your approval to do a salary market study with the performance pay piece coming in a separate phase and will be deferred until the evaluation appraisal process is in place. The salary market study will look at all positions and all pay groups, look at strengths and weaknesses in compensation areas, and then make recommendations for improvements. In terms of effective leadership and goal three, staff retention and support, the work on the employee surveys, that data was reported back to you and reported back to staff. There was a follow-up survey initiated by staff on the recommendation, on the recommendation of the Studer folks, and so that work took place in, before the end of the school year. And then the final piece here was that the pilot, the four pilot campuses that were working on the new appraisal process, they're recommending or wanting to continue into the next school year, and that will come to the board for your approval later. In terms of customer service, the parent surveys work was completed, that work came to you in June, and that work was rolled out during the LLT session. And the department service rating process was rolled out in a session in June also. And that was where we've asked staff to rate departmental functions. So that piece was, was completed. Goal nine, looking at leadership development, this is one which there were, there was significant amount of activity, especially right in the final quarter. The aspiring principal and assistant principal academies, all of that work to finalize and approve those participants in those academies was done, and those folks really have already hit the ground running on that project. The third area superintendent was hired, and the area superintendents will, will work with the mentor program in the upcoming school year rather than working through the HR department as it was in the past. You approved a proposal developed by the junior high principals on professional learning community and added a significant amount of money to the budget to fund those new positions and to support their work in 13-14 school year. Studer, of course, provided that district-wide leadership training for all administrators. And then in addition, we had two principals who were selected and attended the Harvard Principal Training Program, five principals and the area superintendents who attended Model Schools Conference, and then those principals will receive follow-up training from Model Schools throughout the 13-14 school year. Goals six and seven deal with parent-community engagement, that new position that was being filled was, of course, that person was, was on the agenda tonight. The principals received their own campus parent survey results and had an opportunity to work with those. The research on best practices for providing parent training continued through the, through the last quarter, but will also continue into 13-14. And so will the recruiting and tracking of participants will continue into 13-14. And then rather than the superintendent advisory committee, that activity was really refocused into the superintendent's work to improve parent and community engagement with, with his work dealing with groups and individuals. You see a whole list of, of groups that Dr. Kavassos has worked with, and, and of course, that focus will continue in 13-14 also. And the last goal to- And the last goal to be reported on is communication and becoming a premier school district. The community communications department continue to update their, all of their communication materials, the videos, the web, the website, Facebook. As new pieces of the strategic plan were rolled out, they continue to prepare the fact sheets and keep those pieces up to date. And the internal communication plans, although work continued on that in the final quarter, there will be a communications audit in 13-14. So the final work on the communications plan will await the results of those audits to be used along with the survey results that were conducted in the 12-13 school year. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Say.
You're welcome.
Always a pleasure to see you back here.
Thank you.
It's good to see things getting done in year one. That's why we like, so, Mr. Pampa.
Thank you, President Hogg. First of all, thank you, Elaine, for organizing the information in such a succinct way that we can see everything that was done. Congratulations to the administration for a tough year in every which way you look at it, with all the transitions and filling all the staff, 22 new individuals today, and in the middle of all that, executing on quite a bit of the strategic plan. So kudos to all of you out there that have been working so hard on not just doing your day-to-day jobs and tasks and things that you have to do, but on top of that, going a little bit above and beyond so we can accomplish some of those things. So that's great. What I would like to see, I think this is good, but we've seen one and two, and I've already forgot what one was and what two was. Can we get a summary where we have the full strategic plan and with all the goals, strategies, and activities in, you know, with a kind of a update on what all got done, what was supposed to be done this year, throughout the year, what has been done, what didn't get done, what's going to have to be pushed either till next year, or maybe some activities that you've said those weren't the right activities once we got into it, and so we're going to change those. So just a, that way we can say, okay, this is what we were supposed to do throughout the year, and this is what we actually did. And I know in some things, you move things that were in year two and three forward to year one, there's things that were in year one that moved to year two or three, and so just kind of really so that we can look at the complete plan and say, okay, this is what we actually did versus what we were trying to get done.
Yes. Mr. Pampa, we have a spreadsheet that has much of the information that you just described along with budget and how much we've spent and what we moved to the next year and things like that, so we can get that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I think I've seen glimpses of it. I was working with Cindy on something, and I saw a little bit of it. So I'm thinking you have it already, but yeah, if you'd share it with the rest of us so that we can see exactly what all we were able to get done this year.
Absolutely. And the other point that I want to make is that Elaine's working with us to develop the annual report that will come out in September, once we have our data back and things like that. So that annual report will be comprehensive for that year one.
Thank you.
Good point, Mr. Pampa. And we will have, on August 12th, a brief taste as Dr. Cavassos presents state of the district of what all was accomplished in the last year. And so it will lead up to that eventually, our annual report. After numbers are out and everything's done in year one, we will then send that out to everyone from state of the district and numerous other people within the community to show how we have done within the last year. A good point, Mr. Pampa. Dr. Reich.
I would add to that that we include that spreadsheet on our website as well, just for the public. I mean, we've got very good summaries, which I think summaries are good, too, but for those people that really want to see the whole thing, then we can just put that out there and be fully transparent.
Absolutely. Yes.
Good point, Dr. Reich. When you're doing all this good work, you might as well let people know all the good work you're doing. There's nothing wrong with a little self-promotion. Don't laugh at me, Mr. Hebs. I thought there was going to be some comment about me and self-promotion, so. Never miss a chance at all. Mr. Hebs, you're up, sir.
Elaine, thank you for your presentation. This last year was one, as we marked the first year of the strategic plan. I love the, tonight's introductions. Just about every person that came up was referencing the strategic plan and wanting to be part of that. I thought that was very impressive because that means that the employees that are coming in are buying off on it. It having been the first year, the second year is always harder. People are going to, you know, and say, okay, you've been talking about this, where's the real improvement? That's going to be the things that we're going to have to be showing. I think that state of the district will be something that will help us. I'm going to ask you, just your candid opinion. You're the outsider looking in. How do you feel, just kind of top-line judgment, do you feel like we were going down the right path? Do you see any areas that you may have thought that we were missing the mark?
Well, from my perception, I think I said this when we, when we last got together at the last board meeting that I attended, I think the district has accomplished an amazing amount in the first year. And, you know, I've worked with several districts, and believe me, you hit the ground running fastest and got the most work done. Because typically, you think you can do a lot more than you can do, but y'all did most of it, and that is really amazing. And I think it's especially amazing in light of all of the staff changes and, I mean, you know, every time I come, I see somebody new in a new position because of vacancies and retirements and all that. I think that, of course, I haven't had a chance to see the, all of the data yet. As the data comes in, I'm capturing that, and I'm starting to actually prepare the results piece. But from the implementation side, I think the district has done an amazing job in moving forward in every goal area. And especially in light of, with a lot of staff and critical pieces missing for a lot of the timeframe, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hebs. And Elaine, thank you for all your work. I think, as much as we thank staff and all their hard work, I think you helping them format and put it all together and know how to keep tabs, I think is a big help also. So we must thank you for all your work. And we all thought it was the right decision when we chose you to be our kind of outside eyes and ears, and I would confirm after year one, I think it was fully the right decision. So thank you for all your hard work. So with that, seeing no other lights, Ms. Say, thank you for the first year.
Thank you.
We look forward to many more years to come.
See you in September.
Thank you, Ms. Say. See you in September, hoping we make it till September. Next, we go on to discussion item B, a technology update. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, I'd like to share with you that Chad Brannum is going to provide a technology update, and he has worked diligently since he got here to fully assess the technology department and our technology needs, and he is ready to present his understanding of that and direction.
State of the Union.
Welcome, Chad.
We'll keep it under about three hours tonight. We've got plenty of time. We're early, a little earlier than we thought, so. President Hogg, Board of Trustees, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for allowing me to come in this evening and share with you kind of where we're at in regards to the technology program. I've been there a short time, but I've seen some great things and certainly met a tremendous number of quality people within the district, and certainly looking forward to building upon that. Really, tonight, the focus is going to be where we are and really where we're going. And the bulk of the presentation really is going to be about where we're going. So I want to just kind of transition really to that conversation of where we're at. Just real quick, to highlight a few key things that have happened in the district really over the 12-13 school year. And I wanted to highlight the technology bond program. You know, we don't always take the time to reflect upon the things that we have done. It gave me the opportunity to kind of see what the original plan was of the bond program as it relates to technology over the past few years, the original allocation being $60 million, and really getting a feel for the original intent of the program, from the replacement schedule to really trying to expand the resources out at our campuses and providing a level of equity across those campuses and really shoring up some of the network upgrades across the district to be able to provide a high level of technology components out of the campus. Just to highlight real briefly a few items from the previous school year, you'll notice that a bulk of these are network upgrades that have taken place with those dollars. I do want to focus on the wireless enhancements because that is a key, a key component of what we're going to do moving forward, especially with the BYOT initiative across the district. As we really look at expanding and opening up our doors for the use of personal devices across the district, as well as guest devices potentially as, as community members or even business partnerships come into our district, that's going to be key to really stay on top of. So we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get later in the presentation, but I do want to key on that because that's going to be an ongoing important piece of our puzzle as we kind of project forward. Language labs at our junior highs, the, so we call it CVI course, just plain and simple, at the junior high campuses are a few things that we've used our bond dollars with over the past school year. Online transcripts, badge ID access are a couple of things. I want to transition quickly to the instructional materials allotment. This is kind of an unknown pot of money to a lot of people, and a lot of people don't understand where it came from. So I thought it would, it would be good to share with y'all to make sure we all understand kind of what this pot is. And really, it's the old textbook fund and it's the old technology allotment fund merged into one. And so we do our best, obviously, to utilize those dollars. Traditionally, historically here in Arlington, that has been used primarily for the purchasing of textbooks, consumable materials, and those kinds of things. But I wanted to give you an idea of how much money we actually have. The way, the way that they used to do it in between 2011 and 13 was to give you two years' worth of funds upfront in that biennium. And within that biennium, we had just shy of $9.7 million. Out of those funds, at the end of the 12-13 school year, we had about $1.1 million left over. Starting with the 13-14 school year, they're giving us one-year lump sums instead of bienniums, two years' worth. So our allocation for this upcoming school year is roughly $5.1 million. So if you take our one-year's worth of fund with our remaining balance, that gives you our starting balance for the 13-14 school year. And the projection from them for the 14-15 is roughly what we received for this upcoming school year. So in reality, we should get a slight increase in the amount of funds that we have available to us through that process. And really, the intent of this program is to go towards instructional materials, technology equipment, really instructional resources that we can use across the district. To highlight just a few of the purchases we've done over the past school year, I want to really mention this one because I think this will be good, good success at our secondary campuses, specifically our high schools. Traditionally, we don't have the ability to track the assets that we've purchased with IMA funds at the high school level, specifically textbooks. So what we're doing is we purchased a product called TipWeb. We're going to be barcoding all of those textbook resources at the high school campuses, and it will provide us the ability to assign those resources to the students. So as materials are lost or stolen or what have you, we actually have a way to hold those individuals accountable for that and recoup those funds. So that's going to be hopefully a good thing for our campuses. And our goal is, if that's successful at our high school, we want to expand that down to our junior highs and our elementaries and really have better asset tracking across the board for those resources. Couple of other things, as I mentioned, consumables, textbook resources, we've spent a lot of money certainly in these areas listed here, the 10 certification courses for career and tech, a couple of subscription-based products, NetTrecker and Learning.com have been purchased through that allotment process. But this is really what I wanted to show you. I'm going to play a video with you, for you real quick because I think it's really an important conversation to have. You know, as we think about how we've used this big pot of money, it's a lot of money. How can we reuse and repurpose and revision those dollars and use them more effectively? Instead of buying traditional textbooks, we need to be focusing on digital resources, interactive textbooks, interactive resources that really provide more, more meaning for our students. But I thought I would show you a random video that a student just put out on YouTube on what he thinks of a traditional textbook that he uses on a daily basis in his learning. Let me play that for you real quick.
Joe, what are you doing there?
Uh, it's a video, I brought a picture. I don't know.
What are you, what are you, what are you, what's going on?
Well, this is some, like, this is like a foreign tool.
Okay. What was, you said you were having a problem earlier?
Oh, yeah. Wait, where's the, yeah. So I want to read more about Frederick Douglass or maybe like see a larger image. So I double-clicked on the picture, but nothing's happening. And then I can't really read the text because it's kind of small, so looking for the system preferences so I can make the text bigger, but can't find anything.
Laura, you said there was a problem involved?
You can't double-click the image because it's not blue highlighted. And the words you don't know, you can't, they're not blue highlighted, so you can't.
Well, wait, cotton is king, that's kind of, that's blue.
What are you doing there? What, it's what?
It might be a link, Joe, click on it. Nothing's happening.
What's wrong, Joe?
I don't know. There's so many, like.
Joe, drag that picture, you could save it. That could be useful.
I don't even have a folder anywhere to put it in. Like, if I drag it, it would just be like right here.
I'm a searcher. I can't read it.
Like, how are you doing that? You're like changing the pages. I know.
Are you just clicking through? What's going on?
It's like microtechnology. No, I'm just turning like, like, page.
Okay.
But it's like microtechnology, so like, everything is inside the page.
Inside the page? That's insane. All right. Well, I hope, we'll check back later, see if you fixed your problem.
That's pretty cool. You know, for me, we don't always take the time to reflect on what are students thinking about their own learning. So when we think about what they need to be engaged in, in collaboration and really their learning process, you know, we need to reflect upon that and really make some better decisions on how we can go about doing that. And I guess this is just a good example of, I mean, heck, we probably all had that textbook when we went to school. So it's more of the same. So how can we change that, digitize that, and really engage them in what they're learning? So I thought that was a pretty neat, pretty neat video. Okay, real quick, just wanted to highlight some items from the strategic plan, you know, coming new into the district. I've had the opportunity to look at a lot of materials, a lot of different things, and so what I did was kind of went through the key parts that are important for us because if we want to align with our district strategic plan, the curriculum audit and all those pieces, boy, some things stand out to me. And so when I think of engagement and teachers and their roles in the learning process, I think of these things, empower, engage, relevant, innovative, rigorous, those are all great things. Just to quickly highlight some of the things, the technology-rich school district, leading-edge engagement, creativity, these really stand out to me. And these are things that I think we need to be about as a district, you know, and we need to think through the lens of how we can do that in any way, shape, or form across, across our environment. Effective leadership, cultivate, enhance collaboration. I think when you go into the real world, you know, we have to have the ability to have these skills. And we can't expect our students to go out into the real world and do these things unless we help guide them along the way and infuse that into what they do on a daily basis in their learning process. So I thought it was really neat to kind of go through there and, and think about that and have those things stand out to me, and certainly I try to do those on a daily basis, and we need to try to instill that across our entire district to do those same things. Curriculum audit, I think this is probably the first time that some of this information might be getting out, but I think it's important to note that really I've had the opportunity to look at the technology components within the curriculum audit that we've received, and two specific findings stood out to me. We need a technology plan, we don't have an effective technology plan, and really, we don't have alignment and consistency with technology integration across the district. To me, that's pretty much everything. So how can we go about developing an approach aligned with our strategic plan, aligned with the curriculum audit findings, and really move forward and start to make some headway in some of these areas? So anything and everything that we are going to do moving forward in the district is through those lenses of being strategic and in alignment with those findings. Okay, so now the really cool part, this is the fun part, about where we're going. You like my picture? It's pretty neat. Okay, so I like to think of everything as a blank canvas because if we can dream Okay, so I like to think of everything as a blank canvas because if we dream it, we can do it. And I really go about it that way. You know, let's think outside of the box, think differently about how we're doing our processes and procedures, and let's think about a way to enhance it. Let's build upon the great things we're already doing, but enhance it, take it to the next step and really infuse that in all of our processes, not just student learning, but of course our business processes across the entire district as well. We're going to be about designing learning experiences. And this is a pretty cool graphic because, you know, it's under construction. It's constantly changing, constantly evolving, and that's what we need to be doing with our own thoughts and everything that we do. So if we had to think about, if we wipe this, if we wiped the slate clean and we could start with that blank canvas, how would we do it? What are the things we need to be thinking out, thinking about as an organization, as a technology program? And I really challenge our other aspects of the district to always be thinking about how can we challenge ourselves to do things differently? What are the things we need to be considering as we move forward and design a new model? You know, we need to take into account obviously curriculum, building design, instruction, classroom design, 21st century skills, training, assessment, learning, technology. One of our up and coming graphic artists and designers scribbled this picture, which I think is very good. But for, but for me, when I look at this picture, what, you know, what does this mean to you? To me, this means our end goal is our end goal, but there are many paths to do that. You know, think outside the box, think creatively, get from point A to point B. The point is get to point B, it doesn't matter how you do it. Be creative about how you do it and enhance the process. There's a mean little guy on the bottom there, but the other two are happy in that picture. Okay, I've got one more video to show you and I think it's important. I know it's, it, I think you'll really enjoy the video. I think it's important. So when we talk about transformation and what we need to do in regards to student learning, these are things that we need to be thinking. So I do want to play this video for you real quick and then we can press forward real fast. If I can find it. All right.
I'm a teacher and I have a question. How do I prepare students to succeed in the 21st century?
Today's students will face challenges we haven't imagined, take jobs yet to be invented, and toil in a workplace constantly reshaped by the exponential progress of technology. Only one thing is certain, classrooms designed for the industrial age won't prepare students for this dynamic era, a new century calls for a new paradigm.
So what's my role?
We need to reset our sails and navigate these uncharted waters with our students. The sage on the stage must become the guide on the side, no longer the knowledge keeper, but the chief knowledge seeker, learning along with and even from students. Competency must shift from knowing the right answer to asking the right question.
What kind of car will you be driving 20 years from now? Or will it do the driving?
Will future conflicts be waged over oil or water?
What do we do if sea levels rise as predicted?
In reimagined classrooms where students become information producers rather than information consumers, questions spark curiosity, encourage critical thinking, and foster creative solutions, skills our students need to adapt to any situation and compete on a global level.
How do I prepare for this role?
First, by recognizing that our students, digital natives, view technology as an extension of their nervous systems, it has literally shaped the way they think. It's the key to connecting with them and a bridge to learning. The skillful use of technology puts the world at their fingertips, makes deep investigation possible, and provides a flexible, engaging format for project-based learning, so essential to building critical thinking skills and preparing students for the workplace.
And where do I learn these skills?
At a college of education that's striving to mirror the classroom and the workplace of the future, with collaborative learning, multi-platform competency training, and a philosophy that encourages teachers to imagine new and creative ways to reach students.
What if I created a project that allowed my class to work with students around the world to document climate change?
Could a teacher in Argentina tutor my Spanish students in real time? Why not?
How can I design a project that gets my young students excited about the creative power of math?
Do you think in 2020 that you'll wear your next computer on your finger or under your scalp? And what kinds of opportunities does that present?
The 21st century provides enormous challenges for educators, but also boundless opportunities. The ability to inspire and unleash creative energy is unrivaled in history, and it all begins with a new paradigm for a new age.
I am a 21st century teacher.
I don't have all the answers or all the knowledge.
But I can prepare my students to find the answers and formulate the solutions.
Because I have the key.
I have a question.
There we go. Pretty cool video, I think, you know, as we think about our student learning process and, and the things we need to consider, you know, we have a lot of work to do in regards to, you know, providing the tools necessary for our own teachers to be successful. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. You know, nine times out of 10, it's not the, the students that's the issues, you know, it's our, our teachers maybe being afraid and we, you know, so we have to really help them get to where they need to be to ultimately empower students to be successful. And if you notice within the video, there's some keywords there that are right in along line with the mission of Arlington ISD. All these things we're looking to do, it's all in the line with where we need to go. So for me, I call it the perfect storm. You know, we have the opportunity, we have a, a district strategic plan, we have a curriculum audit, all of these things line up for us in a very nice way. What does this mean? They all interlink, strategic plan, curriculum audit. We, we've had a lot of conversations, we're, we're developing our instructional model, our campus culture, our learning environment, our, our technology bond program. All of those link together and really impact the technology program as a whole as well as ultimately student learning. And so all of, we have the great opportunity to really make a large impact across everything that we do with everything that we have going on. So I wanted to mention a little bit about our technology bond allotment. Can you tell it's on hold in that slide? But, you know, coming here, you know, there's a lot of money in the pot and I think it's important for us to really take a step back, take a look at the monies that we have available and really make sure it's being utilized in the most effective way possible. You know, I, I don't think it's very effective to simply allocate pots of money and let it be utilized for whatever they think it might be, need to be used for. I think it's important for us to make sure it's in alignment with our district goals and objectives, certainly with our strategic plan and certainly with the curriculum audit. So one of the, the purposes of putting the, the bond allotment on hold really is to talk about how we can revision that. You know, if we're going to start to hammer upon the things that we need to do as a district, we needed to think creatively about a way in which we can plant seeds at our campuses. One of the things out of the process after we reviewed the curriculum audit results was coming up with a potential grant process. And the purpose of the grant process ultimately is to be in alignment with our curriculum audit findings, you know, revisioning the use of technology in the learning process throughout that campus, certainly creating model classrooms. I think it's important to plant the seeds across the district to where we can really start developing those teachers at the campuses, building the capacity within them as individuals and ultimately work with them to, to, to create model classroom environments that really can provide engaging learning experiences for our students. So what we did, and I'm going to have actually have Jill, Jill Galloway come up, our director of instructional technology and kind of walk you through this because we've had a lot of conversations with, in regards to instructional technology and how we really can impact the student learning process. And so she actually put together our technology through innovation grant website that I want her to walk through real quick and talk a little bit about that for just a minute. Let me pull that up real fast. There we go. Go ahead.
President Hogg, Dr. Chukavasas, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity. We have developed a transformation through innovation grant to help kind of meet all of these goals that we're talking about. It can really take a multifaceted approach to, and solve several of these things in different layers. First of all, we are going to make sure that as our campuses purchase technology, before they are asking for equipment, they're formulating a plan. And that plan is how students will learn because that is the whole purpose of our department and technology in the district. So we will hold grant workshops for our teachers who are interested on campuses in applying for this grant. And in these workshops, we will kind of talk about what exactly is transformation, transformation? What does transform, transformational learning look like? Why do we need to be innovative in this digital age for learners of today? What kind of technology qualifies for this grant? The application process and kind of a timeline of how that will happen. Kind of in line, always modeling 21st century instruction, this grant process will be wide open in terms of giving teachers full creativity and designing those learning environments. We certainly want teachers to give those opportunities to our kids, so we're modeling that and everything we do by providing that same opportunity for our teachers. So in our grant workshops, we will guide them, we will provide some resources for them and kind of talk about transformed learning. We have provided a guide for them, which, which are basically just some very simple questions they can ask themselves about what learning looks like in their classroom to kind of help guide them along the way, push their thinking. And there are basically seven characteristics of 21st century learning here. They do align to the ISTNUT standards, which our state has also adopted as our technology application standards. And it's just kind of there to push teachers' thinking and help them, you know, really wrap their mind about what kids should be doing in today's classroom. So we will provide.
Go ahead. Yeah, let me just notate really the, I just want to add in, in the sense that the purpose of this grant, we realize that, you know, it potentially could lead to potential inequities between some of the campuses. I think in some ways that's healthy. In some ways I do think that's healthy is because in order to move, we have to have excellent examples of how it should look like within the classrooms. So I think it's important that this grant program really can offer us some great headway into establishing quality instructional practices within key classrooms that then will start building capacity within those individuals, but then that's going to lead to further success because then we can start bringing in other teachers into those model classrooms and start building their capacity and it becomes more and more and more and make it a larger impact across the district. So, so that's a large piece of the puzzle with this grant process.
So as part of the application process, I've, I mentioned they will have to develop a proposal and that proposal focuses on student learning. So they will need to, you know, define for themselves, what is their ultimate goal? What are the steps that they need to take to get to that goal? What are some potential obstacles they may overcome? Because if you think proactively about things you may encounter, then they may not really be large obstacles once you actually get there because you already have solutions in place. They will determine, you know, what is, what is their success criteria? How do they know when they've really been successful in their plan? And, you know, determine their scope. A lot of times when we have new opportunities, you know, they can spiral and really snowball into a, this, a project that has such a large scope that it can never be successful. So immediately, what are you going to tackle this spring semester with this project? And then what are some opportunities in the future that this will provide your students? In addition, as the district is committing to providing this equipment to teachers to benefit kids, we are asking that the teachers who are awarded this grant commit to some things as well. For instance, we are asking them to commit to submitting a short video of the ultimate end goal, the, the classroom at work, students benefiting from this technology. Those videos will be collected and put in the library to, as Chad mentioned, serve as models for other teachers who want to try innovative things in their classroom. We will ask them to commit to providing two lessons that other teachers could use to turn around and implement this in their own classroom, including student products. So teachers can actually see what, what that, the end result might look like. And we will ask them to mentor a grantee for the following year. So again, not only are we putting technology in the hands of students, we're building leaders that can help kind of replicate these things throughout the district. And also present as needed, again, to share their leadership and to ultimately have them with their, some of their students present at a TI showcase in May where ultimately we just have the teacher and some of their kids have poster sessions where we kind of, not, you know, poster but digitally obviously, where we can all walk around and just kind of see what all they've done and how powerful is that to hear from kids? We know we will get the authentic truth from kids and hear how they have benefited from that. So those are some of the commitments that we do ask of teachers and we will provide them resources to help build their technology items that they need to support their learning. So they definitely have to have that plan first and they need to let us know if there is any training, they need to be successful. We want to fully commit to this investment and we do not want to give them, we want to make sure they are fully supported in this entire endeavor. And then they will need to budget the items that they will need to kind of make their plan happen.
Sure. I think some of the key components of that is we want to focus on teams of teachers, not individuals. So as you look at the campuses, we, we want that built-in collaboration, that built-in connections between teachers. So they have somebody to go to. You know, they're going to have some struggles and some growing pains and trying to figure out how to do things effectively and they have partners at their campus. So part of the grant, grant process is going to be heavily focused more so on teams of teachers versus individual grant awardees to kind of have that built-in support structure through that process. And really we need the support of their principal too. So teachers that apply or teams of teachers that apply as a part of the grant process, they have to have, sign off by their campus administration and their principal. We have to have full buy-in from that campus in order to move forward with what we hopefully can do across the district.
So in line with that, a very big part of the success of this are our instructional technology specialists. We, their ultimate purpose is to support 21st century learning. That's really why they're here for is to support learning. Ultimately, that means two things, being able to design those 21st century learning experiences and being able to train and coach staff on implementing them and then ultimately building capacity so they are able to design those themselves. Currently, we have seven ITSs and we have quite a few campuses. So they definitely have a big job ahead of them. Each ITS has about 10 to 12 campuses, approximately on average 610 teachers, and they impact almost 10,000 students. That is a, that is quite a responsibility for one person to have. So ultimately with that in mind, we need to really determine how are they spending their time? The goal should be, a large bulk of their time will be directly supporting teachers and campuses. They do need to spend some time training as well, but our main goal here is to maximize their time on campus so they can give that direct support to all 610 of their teachers that they, they have to support.
With campus being the keyword, campus. Now, the PDC at the campuses directly integrated and working with teachers at their campuses.
So as Chad mentioned, based on our, based on the curriculum audit findings, we certainly have some work to do in terms of supporting our teachers and integrating technology. We need our students to dig deep into that content and we want to be there to support them all along the way. So considering we, each ITS has that many campuses to support, we need to think, how can we revise what we're doing? You know, it's not always just more of the same. Let's take a step back and say, how can we really rethink what we're doing and maximize our time to make sure all of our teachers and kids get the support they need? And first and foremost, we need to make sure we set the district expectation that there is an instruct- that there is an instructional focus. We want all of our professional learning to focus on instruction first and foremost. Certainly, technology is taught within the context of that, but the context is instruction and it should always focus on learning. That aligns with what we want in the classroom. We don't want kids learning basic facts in isolation. We want them presented in a real context. We need to do that with teachers. Turns out, it's just a good strategy for humans, you know? We just need to present everything in a real context. Who knew? So, and very importantly, teachers need to see what it looks like. We can sit up here and talk about it all day long, but that doesn't always mean they're going, going to understand. You know, I personally, I'm a visual person. I need to see it. I need to feel it. And I think a lot of people do. So we want to make sure our PD coming out of our department models that at all times. We want to kind of take an immersion approach. We want teachers to experience what is 21st century learning? We want them to experience it themselves. So that way, as they're learning their technology, they're seeing everything in that 21st century learning context. Our face-to-face PD sessions should primarily be focused on implementation. How do you implement technology in your classroom? Not how do you use a tool? Those are basically basic facts. We don't want to teach them, click here, click there. We want to say, here's an amazing tool, how can you apply this with your kids? So when you leave here, they know how to apply that to their classrooms. As we talked about with our TI grant, those model classrooms, videos will be available for teachers in an on-demand training library along with some other things that we're going to touch on here in just a second. We will also have those model lessons that the teachers develop as well as lessons from ITSs that will help guide teachers along the way so they can actually see what this looks like. And as we said, they need to maximize their campus presence. We need to make sure that most of their time is spent coaching, modeling for these teachers, showing them what it looks like, helping them plan together in PLCs and then designing those lessons. And we'll kind of get more into this later, but do some virtual support with our teachers. So even when they're not on campus, they can still give them that, that support. We also need to communicate with campuses, help campuses understand that their role is to be purely instructional. That, you know, that's what we're emphasizing. And how does the technology liaison fit into that instructional support structure as well?
In your packet, you should have, actually, that, that, under the integration specialist section, I hope you all had the opportunity to view that. But there should be the role of the AISD Technology Integration Specialist within your information. I think that's important to, to know as we really have conversations about really what that person does at the campus, instructional versus technical. If you don't, I'll make sure you have this.
In terms of making campus support the top priority, what does that mean? Well, we, we need to figure out how an ITS can support 10 to 12 campuses effectively. How we can provide those pathways so teachers can get the support they need even when they're not on campus. There is a high percentage or likelihood that they won't be on campus when they need help. They still deserve to get that support. We need to help develop a model for coaching and planning with teachers in their PLCs. I think that's the most powerful time to really help change instruction is when they're planning and then working one-on-one with teachers and getting in the classroom, modeling, co-teaching, really guiding them along the way and ultimately building capacity at the campus level so our teachers are becoming leaders themselves and can help support each other as we collaborate. Considering the staff we have as compared to our district population, basically, we just need to think differently about how we're utilizing our resources. There are some things that we can change. We need to redirect ITS time spent on face-to-face sessions on how to use a tool. We can provide those, that instruction in other ways. And we need to make sure we maximize their time spent on implementation. That's where teachers need the most help is how do I, how do I get this in the hands of my kids? And we need to creatively provide that campus, campus coaching and training. One thing we are doing is we're setting up a platform for virtual learning. Another way we're going to model 21st century learning is put our teachers in the, in that virtual learning seat. We will conduct webinars. That may be a great area to provide that how-to type training. And also, you know, when you do face-to-face training, you're limited to the number of chairs in the room. This now opens up the door for a much broader audience. We can also offer those at various times so teachers can learn at their convenience. And the real beauty of this is our audience is really unlimited because every time we do a webinar, it will be recorded and available for anybody who wants to watch it, whether they are there to participate live or not. So it will ultimately be a training piece on demand for our teachers. And we can also build in our how-to videos, print resources like help sheets that probably are more appropriate for the how-to basic skills types things. So teachers really have a wide variety depending on their level. You know, where they need help, they can find that in our virtual library. Ultimately, we sure hope to be able to increase our ITD staff. We have some big goals and a big district and we certainly want to be there to support it. We also want additional people to help with follow-up. You know, just putting something out there and hoping it flies isn't always the best strategy. So we want to be there to follow up with our teachers and provide that one-on-one or PLC group training and help support that they need. As we build our virtual library, you know, that will take some time to do, obviously. So we will need human resources to build and maintain that. And also, we want to partner with other departments to build the same capacity among all of our district staff. We are not a standalone. We're here to support everybody. And we've, you know, already have some plans going to help bring in other departments in, in building this virtual library. Redesigning our PD, I've kind of talked about a lot of these things already. Focus more on implementation, less face-to-face time spent on how-to, making sure we're embedding 21st century learning into those face-to-face sessions so teachers can experience it. Teaching teachers how to apply the content to student learning directly and ensuring teachers leave with a solution in place to turn around and apply. Again, maximizing that campus presence. One way we're going to do that is instead of having teachers come to the PDC to get training, the last thing a teacher wants to do, I'm sure, is fight traffic to make it across town to the PDC. We'll have our ITSs hold that training on campuses. It will be open for all district staff, but we'll rotate locations, giving everybody equal opportunity. That also helps them build relationships on campus because they're out there. They have that presence there and they're building those relationships in the process. So we're kind of getting a couple of benefits from that. Again, we already talked about our virtual PD offerings. Also, ultimately, another thing we'd like to do is creating online courses asynchronous where teachers can take online courses for PD as well. That's another great way to model that 21st century learning is have them experience. And like I said, collaborate, join forces with other departments, make sure we are all working together and have a very unified approach to helping our teachers. And there, also, there are a lot of PD, there's a lot of PD available put out by the state through Project Share. It is available for free, so we definitely need to take advantage of that as well. So hopefully, more awareness on Project Share as we move forward so we can leverage those things. And one last point, when we're talking about our technology proficiency levels, we need to see where are we starting? Obviously, yeah, we have an idea of where we're going, but we don't really know how to get there till we know where we're starting. So we need to do our best effort to obtain baseline data, determine, consider an assessment for teacher skills, determine where they are, investigate certain products like Clarity, which will provide us data on technology use, PD, technology policies. That has the potential to provide us data on students, teachers and parents. Design and implement a new walkthrough form. It's very important that when people walk into the classroom, they know what this, they're looking for. You know, they know what, what kind of things to really look at. Also, consider expanding our technology proficiency assessments to fourth and seventh grade. We do test all of our kids at the eighth grade level. That's awesome, but really, we need to start a lot earlier because if there are holes, we really need to find out where kids are at a young age so they can learn to develop those as they get up to eighth grade when they, at that point, they should be proficient. And aligned with that, possibly considering designing our own customized assessment for 2014, 2015 to actually do that.
Okay. Just a couple of notes real quick on that. That's a lot of information, obviously. You know, for instance, the walkthrough form, we need that to be integrated, obviously, with, with, you know, the walkthrough, the master walkthrough form for the district. That needs to be embedded with that, within that at a, at a district level. You know, some of the key things that we really need to, to consider is, the key point of all that was the learning process, professional learning process. And really, I think the grant process will give us a great opportunity to start making some headway in a lot of those areas and building that capacity and design. So all of that should be in alignment with everything that we've talked about in regards to what we want to do regarding the learning process at the campuses. And that'll also give us the opportunity to start obtaining that data, the baseline data of those teachers at the campuses and really getting an understanding of where they're at and determining what, where their needs are and where we need to go. Okay, almost done. Home stretch, home stretch. Accessibility and collaboration. You know, BYOT program for the district was implemented this last school year. As I mentioned before, the biggest thing that we need to, to really shore up is our wireless network, making sure that really is at an optimal level that we can support the quantity of devices that could be within the footprint across all of our sites. But the other thing I really want to touch base upon on this particular program is powering up instead of powering down. If you visit the campuses and, and, and look at all the individual classrooms, you might see signs. You might have teachers with the boxes that say, put your personal devices in this box. We're not going to use them in the instructional process. Why? Why in the world would we not figure out a way to leverage those personal devices into the learning process? So a lot of what we want to do is have conversations, help, start helping teachers understand how we can leverage and use personal devices across our footprint. Besides, it, it reduces the footprint we have to support and maintain as a district. If you think about our replacement schedule that we have, if we're leveraging personal devices, that's not a device that we have to maintain. So let them bring them, power up, let's have at it. Let's just figure out a way to help them understand how they can effectively integrate it into the learning process. So we're going to be focused on that, on that as well. Okay, a couple of resources I want to highlight real quick. I don't know if y'all have heard of Office 365. Some of you have, some of you haven't. But if you know about Google Apps for Education, it's the Microsoft version of it. So we want to ultimately implement this as a product across our district for all of our students and staff to use. It's free and it's a nice, nice collaborative suite that we can make available for our students and for our staff. Like I mentioned, Google Apps for Education is already embedded in the district, are, are at a high level. That's going to be part of our ongoing district professional development plan moving forward using that. However, currently, it's only available at the 912 level. You know, why are we limiting resources just to our high school? We need them to be available across all students K-12. So our goal is to make these offerings available for all students, not just limited students. Okay, this one's a fun one. As a district, we're considering migrating away from First Class as a product. Clappies, clappies, clappies. You know, we, we obviously need to better understand all the ins and outs of it and what people utilize in that, in that product offering. One of the main reasons, I guess I'm trying to promote accessibility and mobility as offerings for our district. And this is one way that we can have our staff function at a higher level. We can implement a product, Microsoft Outlook, that does offer greater compatibility with our mobile devices, whereas a client such as First Class doesn't offer that. Anybody can easily run a product like that across any device that they have and be successful. So one of the things we're going to be doing is figuring out what that entails, sending out a survey to get some feedback on what people like about First Class. If some of those features go away, how can we provide that in other ways that maybe Outlook doesn't offer to, to our staff members? So we're going to be having ongoing conversations about that and consider what that might look like for the 14, 15 school year. Let's see if you queue in on this. Creating student email accounts K-12. We currently only offer them 912. So obviously, that's something we want to do as a district. There is some concern with kids under the age of 13. So our thought is to create accounts K-8 and limiting them to internal use only. There's a lot of different great ways you can still utilize that and get moving with that. You know, it's crazy to think that we only offer that at the, at the high school level. So we want to open that up to the doors across all, all campuses and all grade levels. Virtual desktop initiative. So one thing that we're going to be doing this fall is putting together a pilot program. And we, and I'll show you in the next slide here, just to kind of move forward here. We've identified certain campuses that we want to do this at. So as we look at our footprint and our traditional replacement schedule that we do across the district, we spend millions and millions of dollars just replacing the same thing every single year. We are wasting so much money. And then on top of that, you think of the time it takes to maintain it. You know, they do manual imaging of those devices. There is no central software repository. They have to reinstall software every time to reimagine a device. It's crazy. So we want to put together a fall pilot that will essentially run at these campuses. We want to target our libraries. We want to target our computer labs, real canned, easy spaces that we can run the pilot in and then run a virtual implementation of it. Centralize those things, centralized operating systems, centralized the distribution of the software. And the cool part about it is if you have an update or you need to install a piece of software, boom, you do it once and it applies to all the devices across the network. So it not only saves time, energy, it saves money. So that's something that we're going to be doing this fall and, and hopefully, that'll be something that we could consider rolling out in some fashion for the 14, 15 school year. All right, online registration for all of our students across the district. We are going to be establishing a committee. Not sure who will comprise of that committee, but we're going to be getting stakeholders involved with that process. And really, the purpose of the committee is to really start reaching out to campuses, understanding the processes that they do within their registration process at their campuses and essentially translate that into something online for our parents. You know, we want the ability to offer online registration, not only for new students, but also for existing students. And certainly, you'll have the ability to, you know, you'll still have, they'll still have to go to the campus with a proof of residency. But we can get rid of so many manual processes through this and save so much money and time that we really want to take the time to, to figure out what this means for us, whether it's customizing a product or whether it's purchasing a product. So we're going to be involved with that. And the plan is to have something available and ready for the 14, 15 school year. I'm not sure if that'll be for all campuses. We might take a smaller approach and maybe do it for a subsection of the district. I'm not sure yet until we really get to that point. But we want that to be successful, so we want it to be right. So we'll be looking at that as well. Okay, data warehouse, our local accountability system. There is something else that we're going to be doing over the course of, of this school year. And we're kind of along the same timelines. We're going to be establishing a committee with Dr. Carter and some other folks involved with this process, really looking at Phase 1 as an administrative level and then really Year 2 could potentially tier down to the campus level and then potentially down to the teacher level. So we'll be looking at those subsets, bringing in vendors and looking at products and figuring out, you know, the scalability and functionality long-term for, for some products and just see what that means for, for us as a district. So as we get further along, certainly, that's something we'll, we'll want you guys to see and the functionality of that and how that works and, and go from there. So the goal there is the same thing, committing in the fall and really select, select a product and really build and gear up for something for 14, 15. Okay, last but not least, the technology strategic plan. I think we're doing one. We're going to do that as a part of the, as a part of the facility assessment process. You're, you're obviously very, very well of that. I don't want to rehash that. But I think it's very important. I think it's important for us, kind of the perfect storm. You know, we have our curriculum audit, our district strategic plan. Let's take advantage of that. Let's revision where we need to go with the technology program across the district. across the district and get people excited about it, get people on board with where we want to go. Anytime you develop a common vision and common objectives, it gets everybody on the same page and there's a lot of excitement and things that we can build around that. So we really want to look at where we need to take it over the next three to five years and this process will allow us to do that. And once we go through the planning process, that really allows us to set up for the bond package on really what kind of funding do we need? You know, when we take into account in years past a replacement schedule, we're not going to do that traditional approach. So what are the needs in the virtual space? What are the needs, uh, when it comes to our instructional learning process, um, online learning, all those things that we want to do? What does that mean in the grand scheme of things and how does it fit in, in alignment with all of our goals and objectives as a district? So our goal is to, like, here are our tenured meeting dates over the course of the fall, complete the plan and ultimately have a recommendation, uh, for the bond in alignment with the facilities assessment process. Just areas of interest. I don't want to rehash that really. The committee really will comprise of stakeholders. You know, we're going to have a combination of administrators, teachers, students and community. We'll go through and identify that and be strategic with who those folks are. We want forward-thinking people. We want people that think outside the box. We don't want the traditional mindset when it comes to looking at who wants to participate in that committee. So we're going to have conversations about who that should be, but, you know, just a combination of all those folks involved with that process. Okay, so where we're headed? Hopefully success. We, we must be successful. It's not an option. But again, I like, I like this picture just because these words really are in align with where we need to go as a district. It's a part of our mission. All these things are so important in collaborating with, with everyone. And final thoughts, you know, for me, how, how are we going to be successful as a district in thirteen, fourteen? Alignment, communication, support from the top down, from the board, from the superintendent, all the key folks within the departments, working and collaborating together and being open to change. If we're not open to change, it doesn't matter. So we're really going to work hard on planting those seeds and taking advantage of those people that are ready and hit the ground running. So. Any questions?
Thank you, Chad. Outstanding. Mr. Hibs?
Chad, I've got to tell you, and I'm going to be honest right now. When I got your packet and saw that there was eighty-four slides we were getting ready to go through and two videos, um, I wasn't very thrilled.
You were excited, right?
I want to tell you, I, I want to tell you seriously, um, wow. This is the most thorough presentation on technology. Thoughts, ideas? I knew that, uh, the superintendent had brought you in and he claims that you're competent. But to see that you actually have individuals within your department that can come up and share the same enthusiasm, the same, uh, excitement, uh, with this great potential is exciting to me. I think this is exactly where we were wanting to go with our strategic plan. This gives a, a footprint, a roadmap, a direction. I'm excited. I'm excited to see, uh, the potential and, um, I want to thank you for, I, I, I'll state it again. Even back to the time that I sat on the orig, the last bond and we were going through technology, we were only talking about how many laptops we need and what type of replacement we have. This has vision and, um, I haven't seen anything like that during my first term on this board. So I, I appreciate what you brought to us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Outstanding. Chad, let me ask you one quick question. I, I think.
Yes.
Reiterate what Mr. Hibs said. We love, sometimes we like change a little too much, I feel like up here. It's a good thing. Um, we've made it very clear, very focused. We're looking for new ideas. We're looking for new things. Doctor, I think we breed that. Dr. Gavasso's breathed that and so we obviously see you're breathing that and I know your staff is too. So we thank you on that. Let me ask you one quick question.
Yes.
The thing I always hate to hear is, I hate the replacement schedule also. So I agree with you on that. But what, what do we do on the staff right now that I hear the stories of they have a projector or whatever in their classroom and they're not using it whatsoever? Because nothing drives me more crazy than they do have a piece of technology. How are we ensuring that, I, I think the technology grants is the way we're doing that, but how are we ensuring that the technology we do have right now is being utilized for those ones? Because I hear of some teachers have them and aren't using them and other ones that would do anything to get that technology.
No, that's always the case. And that really good, I mean, we always have conversations about that, you know? People want to buy interactive whiteboards for classrooms that are very expensive. Why? I mean, there's other, the other ways to do that. I think we have to take advantage of our integration specialists and really, uh, work and, and get a better feel for where we're at in a lot of, of the classrooms. Obviously there's a lot of work we have to do. You know, we have to help them understand how it can be done differently instead of it being a glorified tool. You know, and that takes a lot of time and effort. And I, and I think one of the things we really have to put a lot of emphasis on is seeing other districts, seeing other things that are going on, great things that are going on. Take folks to see what it needs to look like. I think we had earlier in the slides, it's important for them to understand what it looks like. And we can't always do that within our own districts. You know, we have to work with them one-on-one, I guess is the ultimate, ultimate way to do that. And some of the tools, I can't sit here and tell you that some of the tools sitting in their classroom, that they need them. You know, and that's part of the problem with those allotments being handed to campuses and just letting them do whatever they want. Don't get me wrong, there's some great things going on. There's no doubt about that. You know, we want to enhance those things. But we need to be realistic and we need to take a step back and really think about, we can get by with less if we do it in the right way. We really can. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
That's okay. We can get by with less, a more efficient use.
Right.
Is where it is. And I think we all talk efficiency.
Right.
How do we efficiently use the dollars that we have allocated?
Correct.
For that. And I think you've brought up some great points. Mr. Pampa?
Thank you, President Hogg. Chad, I was really starting to believe that you were serious about that three-hour timeframe you gave us. I was getting scared. I'm going to echo what Mr. Hibs said. This is a tremendous presentation. He had me at vision. You know, when, when you start with that and, and you, you're talking about embedding technology into instruction and, uh, formulating a long-term strategic plan around, uh, our technology and making sure that we're not just, you know, using the technology but really embedding it and, and making it part of the instruction and, uh, getting to understand that our, uh, digital natives think differently than, than, than we do. That's tremendous. That's good stuff. Uh, I have a, just a few questions on the, on the technology grants that you're talking about. Okay, so you said you have a little bit over six million dollars coming up. Do we still have to use some of that for books that we have to buy or is that all going to be available for your technology grants?
You know, obviously we do, we do need to be cognizant and aware of the resources that are up for adoption and using funding for that. You know, and when we can take advantage of web-based online resources instead of your traditional textbooks, we need to be doing that. So we do need to be looking at the dollars and carving up enough and making sure we're okay in that regards. Spare funding, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for just to simply have another pot of money. I think of our bond as a pot of money. I think of our IMA as a pot of money. And really, just like I showed before, I mean, it's an open, it in canvas to me. How do we use that money? What's the best way to use that? And let's not necessarily use it how we've done it before. So, so yes, there's, there potentially is some good dollars there, uh, to not only leverage within this grant process, but other creative opportunities that we can provide to, to campuses.
I like the idea of leveraging the creativity of our teachers and our staff. I, I think that, and I've seen some of the things that they do, some of the creative things that they do.
Absolutely.
Programs, initiatives that, you know, they're doing on a shoestring budget or, or they, you know, borrow money from their parents to.
Yeah.
Make CDs or DVDs or training videos for their students for the summer and, and, and things like that. And, uh, there's a lot of, uh, potential in there that we're just not tapping. So I think that's a, that's a great idea. Uh, you mentioned going to visit other school districts and that was one of the things that I had in here. We attended, who else attended that, uh, presentation on, uh, I think it was Little Elm ISD, the technology initiatives that they put in place real cra, it's a much smaller school district, obviously. They implemented a, um, I think a MacBook Air for every high school student.
Yeah.
Uh, and then not only that, that, that's kind of cool, but specifically how they are embedding technology into everything they do and the collaboration and all that. So real, um, they've been recognized as, as a, as a district that, that's done real well. I believe it was Little Elm. Is that correct? Did anybody else go to that? I thought there was somebody else.
I know there's some other instances, but I haven't heard of Little Elm specifically.
Anyway, that, we went, they presented at, at the Tasa Taski or SLI, whatever that was we went to recently. So anyway, so, some of those. All right, so some of this, as exciting as it sounds to me, uh, it looks like more work for teachers.
I'll tell you.
Are you getting good buy-in from them in terms of, you want me to jump through all these hoops just so that I can get, you know, what's that?
There will al, there will always be a yes and there'll always be a no to that question. Just because you'll have teachers that are there and excited and it, it is difficult. It's not easy to transform. You know, they, they have to think differently and it, it takes time. It takes work. But this, but the, the benefit of the student learning process is far exceeds anything they'll ever get from the traditional model. So, um, it's going to be a process. It's not happening overnight. And that's why it's important to find those model teachers because if, if we can get them to do it effectively, other teachers can see, hey, it's not so hard. I can do that. And here are some ways in which we can do that, leveraging our integration specialists and other, and other resources that we have across the district. So there's always going to be no's and it's always going to be let's go, um, across the board. We just, you know, we have to take advantage of the ones that are ready and, and get them to move.
I agree with you. You got to find those early adopters and, and, you know, if, if you can work with them and you get some principals to buy in, uh, and I know we have some.
Yeah, speaking of that real quick, we have to have our model, our principals modeling the effective use of technology at their campus. They have to be leaders at their campuses. At the central administration, all of our administrators need to be modeling the effective use of technology across the board from top to bottom. I mean, if we're not doing it at the top, why in the world are they going to do it downhill?
Sure.
So we have to be strategic about that and have those conversations.
I see Bob's real excited about it.
Yeah.
He's got all this new technology.
He's first on our list.
Working with, with all the facilities assessments and all that. That's cool.
Yeah.
Uh, what's your, what's your timeline?
For everything?
Yeah, I mean, are you going to start with the grants first? Are you going to put together the strategy first?
We are going to be, um, announcing the grant process at LLT next week. Uh, and that'll be the principals will get that information. And, you know, we, we have a certain amount of money in mind for that process, but we don't want to limit that process. Uh, we really hope that we get some, some good opportunities to make some headway kind of above and beyond what we have. But our thought is to, to announce it at LLT, move forward with that and hit the ground running. And our thought behind that grant process is to, um, September thirtieth would be our due date for those grants. So the end of September.
Quick, yeah.
And then we're going to take the, the month of October to really digest those, analyze those and, uh, recommend the ones for approval. And our goal is to procure, receive before Christmas. That way in the spring semester that we're hitting the ground running with those model classrooms. So that's kind of our timeline for the grant process. In regards to the strategic planning process, obviously that's over the course of the fall with the plan and that's really kind of leaning up and having the conversations towards where we want to go fourteen, you know, that's going to be a multi, multi-year process. Uh, when we think of just professional learning and instructional practices at our campus, Jill and, and the folks, they've already started having those conversations about professional development, what that needs to look like as we start the school year. Obviously the grant process will be a large piece of that. And we just simply need to start having conversations with our administrators at our campuses. You know, we have lots of ideas for fourteen, fifteen about, uh, the way some different things could be and we're going to be, you know, doing a lot of research and having a lot of conversations that might impact some other things for fourteen, fifteen, but we're not, we're not there yet. You know, we need more feedback and, and we need to collect a lot more data at the campuses to really get a feel for where we're at across some things.
Are Jill and Renee in the same building? Because they need to work, they need to become best friends.
No, Renee's. Yeah, yeah.
So no?
We'll make, we'll make room.
We're not in the same building? Is that what I'm hearing?
We'll make room. There's always room.
I know, I know.
You know what, it's.
Different conversation, but.
Some things are lofty goals, but.
You know where I'm going with that, Mr. Hogg.
We have to set our sights high. You know, if we don't set our sights high, we're not going to make progress. You know, we have to make people feel uncomfortable to be successful.
And I think, you know, uh, I, I like it. I, I like everything about it. Uh, you're, you're shooting high and I think that there's money there to pay for the additional, uh, technicians that you guys are looking for within what you're going to find.
Is that an approval?
No. Until you bring me some money that you found. I, I think with finding some of those efficiencies, you may be able to pay for some of those additional positions that you're looking for.
We have some thoughts and ideas already on that. So, but, you know, we, you know, we, we want to be, um, thoughtful, mindful and, and, um, strategic.
Well, just, just alone in the amount of data entry that we can stop doing if we allow the parents to register online.
Right.
I mean, just that one piece right there. First of all, in terms of customer service is huge.
Sure.
Because the parents don't have to take time off to go register or, you know, the crazy one was this summer, my daughter registering for summer school and she had to bring in all the same information that was already in the, in the system and paper and stand in line for two hours to.
Right.
Give us, give us the information that we already had.
Sure.
Uh, so from a customer service standpoint, that, that's a great deal, but also just from a, um, administration standpoint, uh, we still have to collect all that.
They do.
Paper. We have to.
Manually enter.
That entry. We have to store it. We have to.
Right.
So that alone right there is going to save you some good amount of money that then you can, uh, utilize in, in more effective, uh, means. So.
Sure. Well, keep in mind, obviously not every parent's going to have access. So this isn't going to be a hundred, a hundred percent online situation. So we will be thinking about different ways in which we could provide opportunities for parents to do that process in some fashion.
Libraries, we have labs.
Right. We, we have opportunities, but, but we'll make a lot of headway regardless of, of the footprint that it hits, no doubt.
All right. Well, thanks. Great presentation. Uh, you got my full support on everything that you're trying to do.
Thank you. And additional positions. I like that.
Yeah, it's not an approval. Yeah. You're close, Chad. You're close to an approval. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Hogg. You're rolling really well. Don't take steps backwards. I echo everything that's already been stated. It's very, very good. I was curious on the, uh, the grant, is that your own creation idea? Is that something you did at a previous district or heard that other districts are doing? How'd that come to be?
We have done, uh, we did something similar in Capel. Uh, Jill also did something similar in Irving.
Okay.
So a lot of the, the site that she developed is, is, is some of the things she has done in the past, but certainly the concept and the things that we've done, we've, we've done certainly similar.
Okay.
Similar type of things.
Well, good, good. And that actually leads to my next question, which is, uh, uh, the, the willingness for buy-in. What, what you described to Mr. Pampa was, it seemed like it, it's an annual, uh, submittal process. I, I would expect it, you know, the more communication you can do, the better, but, probably reflective of more limited buy-in, the first year, the second year or greater.
Yes.
Uh, what do you, what do you see for our district and maybe what have you seen in your previous experience of when the, the aha moments happen and you're like inundated with things? Is that the second year, third year never happens?
That is a good problem to have.
Right.
I guess is the problem. But, but, you know, I think, I think it's healthy. I really do. You know, I think, you know, we, we did a matching funds program in Capel that was somewhat similar. And, you know, we, some of the things we could potentially consider to do here, but basically you're refunding those dollars into technology initiatives and how can that look different kind of things? And, you know, the, there is some imbalance because it really depends upon the vision of the campus. Every administrator has a different vision for their campus. How can we help guide them and implement and impact student learning through each of the lenses of the campuses? And over time, they're gonna do different things. And so, you know, you might end up with some things here and there that might seem like they're inequities, but they're not. It's, it's choices that the campuses make. So, but I think that's very healthy. I mean, that's, that's important. It's important for each campus to create their own vision with where they want to take learning at their campuses. Certainly through the guide of administrators, the guide through our plan, the guide through our audit, all those things in alignment, have to be in alignment. But, but I think that all those things are, are good things. I really do. The more submittals, the better, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
It's a good problem to have.
Absolutely.
Let's figure out a way to get more with what we have.
Yeah. Is the, uh, the annual, uh, submittal process pretty much what you've had experience with as far as a standard versus doing it each semester?
Sure about, um, Jill and Irving. We've done it both ways. You know, we've done a fall and spring and we've done an annual. It really just depends upon the, the situation.
Yeah.
We can do it any way we want.
Yeah.
You know, we wanna start, we wanna start with the spring, and if that's successful, we can think about. You know, if we have a lot of effort, maybe we do a fall, maybe we do a spring, maybe it is once a year.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
We're open to whatever it takes to be successful.
That's right. Innovation.
Yeah.
Love it. Uh, can principals apply or does it have to be teachers?
No, we have the, we, we, a campus can apply.
Okay.
So in, in theory, the principal could do that. Obviously, there's gonna be a lot of factors and a lot of documentation of what they have to do. And certainly, uh, individual teachers technically can apply, but we're highly encouraging teams of teachers. So really the focus is gonna be teams of teachers or campus submittals. So if a principal wants to, um, have those conversations and, and submit a grant, um, certainly that will have to involve instruction in the classroom. But they're, they're certainly welcome to do that as well.
Yeah.
For sure.
And are, is it pretty much open-ended for them to not be inhibited by asking for a certain number of items? Or is it gonna be dollars-based or?
It won't be dollars-based. You know, we really want them to submit.
The ideas.
The ideas.
That's good.
You know, it's really, it's, it'd be as creative as you wanna be. Certainly, it has to be in alignment with, with where, what we need. You know, the vision of the district, the objectives of the district, curriculum audit, all those things.
Yeah.
Uh, if it's not in alignment, then, you know, that's not what we're gonna do. But, but, um, I, I envision a lot of the common things that we typically do. It's really a lot about how they're gonna be integrating it into the learning experience. The assessment component, how can we ensure that it's being successful in the learning process more than anything? The tools are the tools, you know, so that really is not gonna change a lot. It's really those other things and thinking about it differently. Uh, that kind of process.
Yeah.
So it makes.
Oh, absolutely does. Does to me. Been waiting for years. This is wonderful stuff. Final question I have, I guess more on a technical side. Are you considering, uh, the, uh, the, uh, I don't know the exact technical words for it. The, the cloud-based cross-platform technology, uh, application systems where, uh, it doesn't matter if they're using, you know, Microsoft or Google or PowerPoint or whatever different programs. But they can all access and see whether it's teachers or students, those different types of things. I don't know what that's called, but I know there's different products out there.
Yeah, there are different ways to do that. And I would say, sure, yes.
Okay.
You know.
Great.
We need to be cloud-based. We need to be web-based. We need to get rid of, um, you know, client-based type solutions. You know, we need to be about portability, mobility and accessibility. So it really doesn't matter the type of device that you have. And that's why BYOT is so important. We want to leverage those devices that we have.
Absolutely.
But we have no idea what it is that they have bringing into our environment. So whatever we want to utilize in the process has to be able to adapt to those things.
Yeah.
So as we move forward with the resources, it needs to be flexible so that we can embed whatever we need to embed.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I'm so looking forward to the, the efficiencies report, the dollars that are gonna be saved. It's gonna be huge. I just know it is. I've been waiting for years. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, President, um, Hogg and wow. Exactly what I wanted to hear. I mean, it's all of the, uh, all of the trustee favorite thing, student success, leveraging, customer services, efficiency, adaptability. And then couple that with a clear sense of urgency to move the district forward in terms of technology. Uh, I appreciate all the questions and echo, uh, what my colleagues have said. I, I do have just a, a couple of things. Uh, Mr. Pampa mentioned the first adopters and I was, I had that written down as well. And, um, thankfully, we have, um, a great population of first adopters. I'm very excited for some teachers that I know, um, have contacted me during the year that, um, have done the flipped classroom model for a couple of years. But in order to do that, they have used salvaged computers that we have to get them to students.
Sure.
When there are iPads locked in a cart, you know, in a, in a closet. Because this checkout process is cumbersome, um, for those shared resources between first adopters and the people who, um, are not so encouraged. So I'm thinking the first adopters are gonna be very excited to hear this. But I do wonder maybe in other districts and, um, what the experience has been. You know, again, for the ones who don't have buy-in, the, the involuntary. Uh, you know, they, at some point, you have, we have to say, what is the standard for the district?
Right.
And, um, I know we'll have leaders and we'll hope to grow and transition that, that culture organically. But, you know, then those, those people that are just absolutely resistant, that's not what they want to do.
What do we do?
Exactly.
Well, I think it's important to, to notate that we have to have a minimum standard for all of our, all of our classrooms. And so we're gonna be going through and, and getting a baseline of, of where we're at and shoring that up regardless of what we do. Uh, and that's important because we have expectations for every student across our district. We want them to, um, obtain the skills necessary to be successful in whatever path they choose. So certainly from, from that standpoint of view, we're going to be looking at that and addressing that outside of this grant process. Absolutely. For the, for the teachers that, that don't want to move, um, frankly, I challenge our principals at those campuses. Because if they're not there, if they're, if they're not in alignment with where we're going as a district, we have to have critical conversations about why. If that's not something that they want to do, you know, that's probably beyond me. But, uh, you know, I can go many ways with that kind of conversation.
I, 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 I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
But obviously, our hope is, you know, they're there for kids and we, we want to help, help them. And a lot of times it's because they're afraid. Um, they, they don't know how. And that's where we have to come in and help guide them, um, the learning aspect of it, the, getting the baseline of where they're at, where they're at as an instructional leader on their campus with their technology proficiencies. And then putting together customized plans to help grow them as individual teachers. And hopefully, they can grow and, and get them to where they need to be. Because they really need to become more facilitators in the learning process. And the teachers need to be taken on, or the students need to be taking ownership over, over their learning. That is a long process to have that happen.
And, and I'm sensitive to the amount of time and investment the teacher has to make. Mr. Pampa pointed out that the teachers, you know, don't have any extra time right now. They're spending a tremendous amount of time, um, after-hours and so forth. So where they're gonna find the time to transition this training, uh, transition into these skills.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm sensitive to that, but we, it's also very necessary.
It is. Baby steps, you know. Some things aren't gonna happen overnight and shouldn't happen overnight. And we want to make sure that everybody is as successful as they can be. We're gonna do a lot of hand-holding if we have to, whatever it takes, you know, to help, help them get that aha moment and look at it differently in some way. I can do this, even if it's something simple. You know, plant those little seeds to help them be successful. Let them get excited about it and hopefully they'll grow as an individual. You know, our students aren't the barrier. It's the teacher. So it's our jobs to work with them and help guide them and support them, uh, so they can be successful.
Again, thank you very much.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. I don't know where to begin. I don't drink Kool-Aid. I'm not gonna jump on the bandwagon like my fellow trustees have here today. You're making it sound like we're still using slide rules and typewriters in the classroom. I think it's insulting to our teachers to approach them with this format. I think the, uh, grant program overlaps with what the Education Foundation is trying to do and has done for many years. I think it'll, uh, overtax the teachers. I think it's, uh, keeping technology out of the classroom instead of putting it in there. Uh, I don't know if the CBOC has been involved in any of this as we unilaterally withhold bond funds from the classroom. Mentioned that we don't know what the teachers are doing. There is a state star report that is a self-report that is available to all of us. Uh, Grand Prairie School, dress pick, where I am familiar, has been doing online registration for a couple of years now. So it's a place to look at to start with. Um, technology used in the classroom is or should be on every walkthrough form. And on every evaluation. So it ought not to be a surprise to teachers that we expect them to use technology.
Absolutely.
We've been through instructional technology and teaching teachers how to use technology in the classrooms for twelve, fifteen years now. Cause I did it long ago. This is a great plan. I'm not saying it's not. It's just that I'm not too happy with the way it's being rolled out right now.
Well, I guess I do wanna make a comment on, um, by no means is our role to insult. Our role is to enhance. So anything and everything that we do, we are doing awesome things at our campuses. Uh, we want to enhance that. To help push our students obtain the skills and ongoing skills that they need for the next level. And so that's our challenge. You know, there's many different ways, ways to do that. We do have people doing great things. It's expanding that and taking it to the next level. And that's, that will be part of our, of our focus.
But from your presentation, it sounded like no technology was gonna go into the classrooms unless somebody sent out a grant. Submitted a grant.
Oh, no, no, no. No, if that, that's, if that's a miss, uh, I apologize if I came across that way to you. Absolutely not, you know.
It did.
Yeah. We need to make sure that we have, um, a minimum technology standards in our classrooms. And, and then continuing to enhance, um, how those, um, whether it's a software-based or hardware-based, how that's being integrated into the learning process within the classroom. So a lot of it is working one-on-one or maybe with teams of teachers on creative and different ways in which they can do that within the, um, lessons that they already have and are, and are doing within their instructional process. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into it. So, so no, no, no. We're, we're about certainly infusing, fusing more and making them accessible and taking advantage of personal devices and providing devices. But it's not about the devices. It's about the learning process and how that's being embedded into what they're doing in the classroom. So we want more. It's just ensuring that it's being done in the right way. Not saying that teachers aren't doing it in the right way. But, you know, we have areas where it certainly could be enhanced at a, at a higher level.
We'll see.
Ms. Padia.
I was kinda sitting back listening to what everybody said and as, the more you spoke, the more I could understand your enthusiasm. But the more concerned I had about the message and how it was being presented. Because I kinda felt like, uh, Mr. Barron as well. Uh, we don't need to make our teachers feel unappreciated and as if they don't have the capability of doing this.
Right.
Uh, by no means do we want to even imply that. We can't get buy-in unless they feel like they're part of the solution. And we need to be careful how this is rolled out. Because, as I said, I, I understand your enthusiasm and I love the idea.
Sure.
But not at the expense of our teachers.
Oh, absolutely not.
So we just need to be more careful on how this is gonna be worded. Uh, Mr. Barron had said, uh, the teachers won't know about this. They haven't started school yet. So they have no idea about this plan that's in place, how aggressive it's going to be or not aggressive and so on.
And that's the purpose of those grant workshops. And so we're obviously gonna provide information to the campus principals, answer probably a lot of questions and help, help guide them and understand them. You know, those grant workshops are for them to come in and really talk about what that process means, uh, answer any questions or concerns that they have. Um, and, and hopefully attack it from that, that point of view. Hopefully that will, that will help that process. And they'll come away thinking of it as, as a good thing.
Well, yes, and I hope so. I, again, I understand your enthusiasm, but my advice is be careful.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Ibs.
My enthusiasm, because I started this off, is this was the best presentation I've seen on technology since I've been here on, as, on the school board. And I'm enthused about it. And I didn't pick up anything from the grant process. I don't believe that it's bond monies, is it?
It is.
It is. It, it's the remaining bond monies that, that's.
Yes.
This wasn't from the, um, what we were, we were talking about, the combined funds of technology.
The IMA funds. That is another pot of dollars.
That's another pot of dollars.
That is another pot of dollars. But the grant process, I guess, we were looking at capturing some of the bond, remaining bond dollars that are available.
And from that standpoint, we're not using the textbooks or the, um, and the technology aspect. That's, that's what's, that's another pot of money that's actually going into the classroom anyway.
As, based upon what that is. Right now, it's primarily been textbooks.
And so I think that even furthers it. I think that there could be the misunderstanding that this, uh, this grant funding was meaning, okay, some, some classrooms aren't going to get it and others' classrooms are going to get it.
Right.
And that might be taxing. I don't read that as that, uh, you know, this is a situation that this gives dollars for those, uh, those core groups of teachers, campuses that, that are wanting to go that next step.
That's right.
And move forward.
That's right.
We're not withholding if there needs to be a replacement of an iPad at a campus. We're not replacing that. And we're also, but what I took from your, your overall presentation that you two gave, it was beyond just the grant funding. We're talking about getting away from, uh, our current technology system that we're using in a district and going to something that the universe is using in Outlook.
Well, that, that's one, one thing, obviously, one thing.
I mean, we're, we're talking about.
Sure.
You know, going into the next generation. I don't see this taxing teachers at all.
We're hope, we're hoping it's, it allows them to be more efficient.
I think this is something that, uh, is exciting. And one thing, you know, you know, Dr. Gavasos and I, you both sit on, um, as liaisons for the Education Foundation. Education Foundation only has so much money and it's very limited. And the grants are very small. What we're talking about, the potential of this, is something that we as a school district need to be doing anyway. Education Foundation is supplementing science projects that are not technology-based necessarily. It's building a garden. What we're talking about is, is expanding the mine through what will be hands-on true understanding, uh, for kids of this next generation or this generation and, and future generations. So, um, my excitement was not just that one piece that, hey, we're going to challenge our teachers to, to broaden and, you know, their expansive, what their current teaching skills are. Mine is talking about this overall, um, direction towards technology that I haven't seen this district embrace. All I've seen at the time that I've been sitting, where I've been sitting is we want to approve another ten million dollars worth of laptops and sprinkle in some, uh, whiteboards here and there. This is talking about a true strategic, you know, strategic plan or strategy of where we go forward with the district. So, um, I understand exactly, uh, uh, Mr. Barron. I keep, I wanna call you president. Uh, Mr. Barron, if, uh, because you, you're in the trenches. You're in the trenches. You, you know what teachers are up against. Uh, but, um, I would hope that they wouldn't view this as being something that is going to be more on their plate that they're gonna have to handle, but this is something that they can embrace.
Certainly. And our, and our goal is to help them understand how it, you know, can be done, potentially enhanced to, to be done differently, really to impact the student learning process. And our, and our goal is to be more efficient, not more work. Clearly, anytime you have change, um, it is an evolving process. You know, and, uh, it's something that you have to, uh, go through, you know, and kind of once you're there, it certainly, hopefully, becomes an easier process.
Perfect. Thank you, Chad. And let me just say, I, I, what I heard was strategy and vision in this, and that's what we're looking for. We've got strategy and vision. I think many a times you said in there stakeholders, input groups, focus groups. Strategy and vision sometimes has to change. And as we roll things out and as you roll things out and as you develop. And as we roll things out, and as you roll things out, and as you develop rollout schedules, things will adjust. I, I think the strategy and vision is right on. I'm very proud of what I heard. And I, one thing I heard you say was your principals and your senior staff utilizing technology. I would say this board's ready to embrace more technology as we've done in the past. So as we get away from our stacks of papers and where we go, by all means, you know. I, I've heard the discussion of the board book and things that we can go in to make it more efficient. Guess what? We've got to set the example in this district of what we're trying to do and where we're trying to go. And that's something I would say we're ready to embrace that comes in so that we know it's not only teachers that are taking on new challenging tasks. Nowhere near to what we do compared to what teachers do. But we've got to set the tone on certain things that occur. So I thank you for your input and your hard work on this and your dedication to the district. Thank you so much, Chad.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have open forum for non-agenda items. I do not have any cards for tonight. So we will go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. Tonight, I'd like to share some information important to our district in regards to our students and our staff. We've been requested, the AISD has been requested by TEA's Texas Literacy Initiative Director to represent the Texas Literacy Initiative at the Department of Education's Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Annual Meeting in Washington DC, August 21st and 22nd. Kathy McFarlane and Becky, Becky, thank you. Will partner with Arlington Public Library Yoko Mantsumo to share about the community collaboration and the foundation of the Texas Literacy Initiative. This is an important opportunity for AISD to be represented at the national level, and I want to congratulate them for their hard work and continued effort with the TLI grant. The Texas Rangers recognize this year's Richard Green Scholars at the Ballpark in Arlington. Six juniors schools, I'm sorry, six high school juniors, one from each high school, are selected each year to receive the scholarship and continue on to participate in internships. Upon graduation, each student is awarded a $10,000 scholarship in honor of former Arlington Mayor Richard Green. Thank you to the Texas Rangers for their continued support of this program. It's very important for our district, and we hope that this continues for many, many years. Monday, I was fortunate enough to attend the kickoff for the Kroger School Supply Drive. From now through Saturday, August 17th, you can visit any Kroger to donate prepackaged school supply kits or contribute money to help with a school supply drive. And I can tell you that the employees there from Kroger gathered out in the parking lot. It was about 100 degrees. And we were out there, Leslie, Leslie joined me in this event. And they were very enthusiastic about the work that they were doing and motivating each other to raise money and sell those school supply kits for the students of Arlington ISD. And so we're very thankful for Kroger's aim for that, and we appreciate their work. Last week, senior staff participated in a retreat for planning, to plan for the upcoming school year. It was a very important opportunity for us as a group to come together, senior staff. And we grappled with a lot of different issues, but one of them was, what does it mean to have relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences? We're going to continue that same discussion as we can begin the school year with our virtual convocation, our state of the district and the first day of school. This summer, we were honored to serve, or always honored to serve as a grand marshal, one of three. And the Fourth of July Parade, the focus was education, and we were able to represent AISD. I was able to represent AISD with TCC and UTA. And we had a good opportunity to not only participate in the float, but to visit and discuss and share ideas and create further partnerships. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good job as the grand marshal of the parade. We missed you not riding with us. At this time, we'll take any school board reports. Seeing none, we will go into our employee grievance hearing. I would ask, so that people can get arranged and other people can leave, it is 11:04. We will start back at approximately 10 minutes from now, no later than 11:15. Quick little break. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to consider the employee grievance hearing of Patrick Dix. We will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to sections 551.074, 551.082 of the Open Meetings Act. Do we need to go into closed? Oh, because we're going to, okay. So read these. Section 551.074 provides the meeting may be closed for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or to your complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Section 551.082 provides the Open Meetings Act does not require a school board to conduct an open meeting to deliberate in a matter in which a complaint, a complaint or charge is brought against an employee of the school district by another employee and the complaint or charge directly results in a need for a hearing. I ask that everyone who is not party to this hearing or who is not going to participate in this hearing to now exit the boardroom. Doors are closed. The board is now open session. Is there a motion on the employee grievance hearing?
President Hogg, I would like to make a motion that the board upholds the administration's decision to demote Mr. Dix and to reduce his pay by 6%. The board also directs the administration to perform an evaluation in 120 days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? At this, at this time, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees voting in the affirmative for the motion. At this time, we are adjourned.